But to see it up front and center was very special, I know for me and for our leadership team yesterday. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate Dr. Jennifer Johnson, Chair of Michigan State University's Charles Stewart Mott Department of Public Health and her team, as we witnessed their commitment to conducting impactful, policy-relevant mental health suicide prevention and maternal health care implementation through a very science-based approach. Unlike any place I've ever seen, the way in which it intersects with the community here and has an impact is incredible. I think the best way that I can describe it, as we were talking about it over dinner last night at the Arts Center, is that I think that the research, the clinical care and community engagement is changing the family trees of the people who call Flint home, and I know it's very rewarding for the work there. None of this would be possible without the partnership and commitment from the CS Mott Foundation and the financial commitment that they've made to Michigan State University and the Flint community over the past several decades. So, thank you, and I think all of you deserve a round of applause. Before I begin my formal report today, and I've got a few slides to share, but I want to give a shout-out to Spartan student athlete Heath Baldwin. If you haven't seen the news, but Heath recently qualified for the Olympics for Team USA in the decathlon, and he holds Michigan State records in the decathlon and the heptathlon, and I look forward to seeing him compete in the 2024 Summer Olympics in Paris. In fact, six Spartan athletes are participating in Olympic trials for the U.S. or Canada, and we're wishing them all the best of luck. Hopefully, at the Olympics, there will be a little bit of "Go Green, Go White" coming back at us. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate Spartan golf team members Shannon Kennedy and Brooke Bierman for recently winning the women's amateur titles in the states of Michigan and Missouri, respectively. Those wins qualify Shannon and Brooke for the U.S. Women's Amateur in Tulsa in August, so good luck to both of them. And I also heard last evening that Brooke Bierman actually has made the final 16 at the North-South Tournament at Pinehurst yesterday, and so more good news on the way, hopefully, this weekend for Brooke. But again, those wins qualify Shannon and Brooke for the U.S. Women's Amateur in Tulsa in August, so good luck to both of them. And since we are offering up congratulations, I want to take a moment to recognize our Vice President for Student Life and Engagement, Benny Gour, who earlier this week received the James C. Grimm Leadership and Service Award from the Association of College and University Housing Officers International. Well deserved, Benny and Benny. So I love singing the praises of our Spartan students and all those who contribute to their success, and these have been the highlights for me. As I've now passed my 100-day mark, I think I'm at about 120 days now, but it's been quite a ride and a wonderful journey over these 120 days as Michigan State University's president. Through my about 52 stops now on this Listening and Learning Tour of the university and some of the surrounding communities, I've met so many Spartans, and I've been impressed by the transformative power of Michigan State University's teaching, research, and outreach in the lives of our students and communities. Today, I want to give you a sense of the impressions that I form focusing on our four broad themes. This is a view that will help shape the vision that I hope to share in my investiture address this fall, which will be on September the 29th. First, Michigan State University is clearly an extraordinarily student-focused institution. I talk often about the importance of being strategic, bold, and student-focused, and I've seen it on every one of these stops along the way. This is empowering Spartans to achieve their aspirations and to make the world a better place. I'm thinking now about Dr. Tammy Long, to whom I had the pleasure of surprising amongst her colleagues at a faculty meeting, presenting her the President's Teaching Award this year. She creates engaging science classroom environments through interactive and inquiry-based learning and peer instruction. And I'm also thinking about conversations with Dr. Melanie Cooper and her colleagues on the College of Natural Science Education Research Team and their success in moving students through redesigned STEM Gateway courses, where we're reinventing the way in which we can help our students get through those, sometimes very challenging, Gateway courses, so that they can matriculate up and continue their goals of becoming a scientist or teaching science education. On my tour, I heard many of our college deans and faculty discuss the growing support that they're providing students. And today, as part of the budget being adopted by the Board of Trustees, there's funding for more advisors, more academic advisors, to support student success, increase student retention, and close opportunity gaps, which is something that we have to do if we're going to attain our goal of 86% graduation rate by 2030. Our student success efforts start with accessibility to a Michigan State degree. And today, the Board will also consider new tuition levels while cognizant of concerns about higher education affordability, something that we're committed to at Michigan State University. So this fall, we will begin offering the new Spartan Tuition Advantage, a gift aid program that will cover tuition for 6,000 qualifying resident MSU Pell-eligible students. A decision that was made last year, and we're going to begin to see the impact of the Spartan Tuition Advantage this coming year. At the same time, the new Spartan One Stop, which I think was maybe stop number six on my Listening and Learning Tour, will begin offering integrated student services to reduce administrative barriers while supporting students' navigation of their enrollment, financial aid, tuition, and billing. And I hope you'll stop by to check it out on the ground floor, main floor of the Hannah Building. Second, a crucial underpinning to our commitment to success for all students and employees is fostering an inclusive culture, where everyone feels safe, welcome, and valued. Here again, the budget prepared for action today anticipates funding the completion of our multicultural center and continuing the inclusivity-focused 1855 professorships. I've said that my favorite place on campus, any college campus, is in the classroom in front of students, and I've seen how engagement is sparked and learning enhanced in spaces populated by diverse students, when you can see the curriculum come to life through the conversations and discussions that happen in the classroom, with each student bringing their own unique and valuable life experiences into those conversations. That's what allows the curriculum to come to life, allows for our students to become active participants in a thriving democracy, both while they're at Michigan State, but once they graduate. If we intend to develop leaders and difference-makers, which we most certainly do, developing the ability to understand others' perspectives and to be able to work alongside and across differences is absolutely vital, and we can best teach it by modeling it, and I encourage all of us to model that. And so, I'm firmly committed to the university's goals around diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as our expressions of that commitment, such as we enjoyed at our fourth annual Juneteenth celebration earlier this month and our campus recognitions of Pride Month. On my tour, I made it a point to discuss our DEI goals with all of colleagues and units I visited, and I came away impressed with the efforts that they're making to attract and support diverse students and faculty on our campus. Consider, for example, the good work of our Office for Institutional Diversity and Inclusion and such programs as MSU Dialogues. At a time of widening social divisions, they've created a space to facilitate dialogue and understanding across identity groups in our community. We're also building a culture of trust and accountability, and I was impressed by our Department of Police and Public Safety's proactive approach in protecting our campus community. They're a clearly experienced and dedicated group of individuals, and the department has a firm commitment to transparency and outreach with programs such as the new Citizens' Police Academy, starting in September. And as a dog lover, I enjoyed meeting the K-9 members of the department and their human partners. So Doug, I thank you for continuing to lead that effort. Third, it's clear that we're a great and a passionately public university, and I say that often, we are passionately public. We're advancing our land-grant mission while also becoming a more contemporary and bolder institution, back to my point, strategic, bold, student-focused. This includes enhancing our presence as a leading global public research university. And I want to stress the word "global." Our research, education, and service presence around the world was among the things that attracted me to Michigan State University. We've been a leader in this for decades and will continue to thrive in this space. My visit with our international studies and programs about our impact across the world left me almost jet-lagged, learning about our research, the things like climate change in the Amazon, environmental justice in the Maycom Basin, and exploring the relationship between religion and art in countries around the world. I'm also pleased with our good work building pathways to our goal of reaching $1 billion in annual research and development spending, and we're getting close, engaging our research faculty and reigniting our strengths in global engagement. We need to continue to address the grand challenges of our time, advancing the common good, and making a profound difference in people's lives. My conversations with Spartan researchers and leaders have revealed a tremendous will to tackle such challenges, and next year's budget includes continued funding for our global impact initiative for attracting and hiring more top talent and faculty researchers in areas of high opportunity. We're also seeking what I like to call a synergy-unleashed approach, through the power of our impactful culture of partnership and collaboration, something that we seek at work here in Flint, and we saw it in front and center, the synergy-unleashed approach of bringing together world-class faculty, researchers, and community partners to solve big problems, none more important than the public health initiatives that are being addressed here in Flint. And with last week's groundbreaking for a new joint research center fresh on our minds, our 30-year commitment to partner with Henry Ford Health. This will nourish a number of health research initiatives, including confronting the challenge of equity in health care and expanding our joint capabilities in cancer research and neuroscience. And finally, all our colleges and administrative units face challenges such as keeping up with faculty needs and technology obsolescence. I've toured some great world-class buildings across the campus and others that I've heard described as looking and feeling tired. I've learned that in Michigan, we call old obsolete buildings as tired and in need of attention, and we're going to continue to work hard on that, as I look at our Vice President Bill Bulmon. Simultaneously, we need to move forward on new facilities that we've identified as necessary for our upward trajectory, such as the new Engineering and Digital Innovation Center, and this is a major priority for us at Michigan State. And I'm confident of our capacity to rise to facility and other challenges, and I'm excited by the many opportunities in front of us. And as Michigan's state university, or as I've said, the university for Michigan, we need to look at expanding professional and master student programs, meeting demands in urban areas and rural communities, and improving relationships with community colleges, a commitment that we will live up to. Among these opportunities is serving as an even stronger engine of Michigan's economy, which is, of course, is the very reason Michigan State was founded 169 years ago. Much of our research and many of our degree programs are key to the economic and workforce needs of the state, working in close collaboration with corporate and community partners. Just yesterday, for example, we celebrated the third graduating class of MSU Apple Developer Academy in Detroit, an amazing program preparing people for digital careers in entrepreneurship. I had the chance to visit about a month ago, and it's pretty cool if you haven't seen it. In addition to the opportunities afforded by our association with Henry Ford Health and other partners to enhance medical education, research, and health care, another arises with the transition of leadership in our health sciences. Although we're bidding a sad goodbye to EDP Norm Boacham, our interim leadership arrangement will give us time to consider the best ways to organize and align our educational and research programs and our clinical operations, and I'm confident that we'll get there. Our mandate to support the state's economy makes us a key stakeholder and partner in its communities, including in our own Lansing region. And I'm convening an Area Economic Development Council to formalize conversations with community and business leaders to seize our shared opportunities in community development and quality of life, to be an engine of economic development for the region. And as an institution that contributes significantly to the state's economic development, talent attraction, and population growth, we look forward to our continued partnership with the governor and the legislature to move Michigan forward. We applaud having a balanced state budget that allows us to adequately plan our internal finances as we look forward to another successful academic year. Finally, I'm pursuing an overall operational excellence initiative that will offer a comprehensive picture of how best to invest our limited resources as we strive to always be strategic, bold, and student-focused. I'll be working with internal and external advisors to assess our opportunities and strengths to supplement what I've gathered across my Listening and Learning Tour over these past four months. I'd like to wrap up this glimpse of my first 100 days by reminding all of us that, in my view, the headline of our university's most important story is Spartans' ongoing passionate commitment to our interlocking missions of education, research, and outreach. Advancing knowledge, transforming lives, as a university, we are truly built for this. Each of us has an important role in this most crucial of undertakings, preparing people for the challenges of today and tomorrow. And in that spirit, let's get to the business in front of us with the next item on our agenda. I'm going to turn to Board Secretary Fletcher for items germane to the agenda.
President Guskowitz will now proceed to be public participation on items germane to the agenda portion of the meeting. Each individual will sign up for speed for about three minutes to address the board. Your time will end when the buzzer sounds. Note that, you know, sort of there's one individual signed up under this section for this morning, so we'll now hear from Aaron Marisi.
It's been a few years since you've heard from me. It's good to see you again. Trustee Scott in T-Bay, you might actually remember me. When you were running for your spots in 2018, I was actually running against you in the Green Party. We participated in a public forum held by the League of Women Voters at the Community Center on Abbott Road. Don't feel bad if you don't remember that. I had a lot less hair back then, and I was a lot less focused on what I was doing. Those things are not true anymore. I came to this with some other words prepared. I didn't entirely expect to speak first, so I want to let the students behind me really guide the demands that are going to be made in terms of divestment today. Instead, I want to remind us of some things that happened a few years ago in relation to how they can be applied today. I remember being in the boardroom in 2018 when a few of our board members voted unanimously to support Luanna Simon staying on as the president, despite the fact that she allegedly lied about what she knew and when in regards to a particular doctor and his crimes. I was in that same boardroom when they unanimously voted to appoint John Engler as the interim president, despite the fact that his legacy in Michigan involves suppressing investigations into sexual assault allegations at women's prisons. And I was there in 2018 when John Engler was forced to resign as the interim president, before any new president was even appointed. I want to make it clear that those demands, those small victories that we got and that we're still fighting for in that regard, weren't gone because people stood here and asked politely. Those were gone because we had marches, we had rallies, we had protests, we stood here and talked to you, and we had sit-ins at the boardroom. You know, these board members like to talk about how they're not beholden to the public will, they like to talk about how they're above the arena of politics, they like to talk about how they're apolitical and they're not motivated by any of this stuff that we like to talk about over here, but they are. Anything that we need them to do, you know, in terms of divestment, are things that we can demand of them. You know, these folks aren't the ones who are losing family members, these folks aren't the ones who are losing their homeland, these folks are not the ones who are being forced to finance their own genocide because a small handful of politicians thinks that it's somehow in the university's best interest, the student body's best interest, or the East Lansing community's best interest to invest in Israeli military interests. That serves nobody but the pocketbooks of the rich politicians that put everybody here, and it's past time to divest. You know, you try to tell us that that's somehow impossible or that it's unreasonable, but if you can't do it, if you're not in charge of the financial holdings, then who is? It's time, past time, to divest, free Palestine.
That concludes this section.
Chairperson Kelly, members of the Board of Trustees, I request approval of the awards found in the Gift, Grant, and Contract Report. The report period is March 16, 2024, through May 29, 2024. The total value for this period is $195,284,276.
Is there a motion to approve the gift grant contract report? Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? The gift grant and contract report approved? I think Vice President for Research and Innovation Doug Gage is going to offer up presenters for the research presentation.
Thank you, President Guskowitz. It has been a really great two days in Flint, and I think we've learned a lot about our success here is really based not on what we bring from East Lansing, but the partnership that we have with the community of Flint. And today, we're going to hear a really specific example of how that has succeeded. These are really important efforts. I think it is a model for what we do not only in Flint but around the world. So today, I want to introduce two speakers. This is unusual for us, but I think you'll understand why, we'll do it in a moment. They will co-present. So first, Dr. Heatherland Uphold, who is a native of Genesee County, translates research into practice by utilizing community-engaged dissemination and implementation science and integrates novel strategies into the discipline of public health. She is specifically interested in reducing the research-to-practice gap and improving information and data equity through audience-centered message distribution and culturally sensitive strategies. Uphold leads the CDC-funded National Network to Innovate for COVID-19 and Adult Vaccine Equity project, I think it's called N-Nice, which focuses on effective interventions and strategies to improve vaccination coverage and reduce racial disparities. She also co-leads the Flint Community Webinar, which shares community-relevant research and resources and highlights the work of community organizations to address the needs throughout the Genesee-Flint area. She earned her PhD in Education, Evaluation, and Research from Wayne State University and has lived and worked in Genesee County her entire life. Her research partner and co-presenter today is Athena McKay. Ms. McKay is an active contributor to research projects in Flint and across the state in her role as Program Manager of Community Engagement for the Michigan Institute for Clinical Health Research, MISHR. And she is Executive Director for Flint Innovative Solutions, a nonprofit dedicated to providing a response to short-sighted government policies. Though providing her voice and community engagement expertise for over 25 grant-funded projects, Ms. McKay excels at connecting community to research projects which aim to meet the goals of the community-based precipitatory research. Her leadership skills have resulted in numerous projects with specific focus on Flint residents, including the Flint Innovative Solutions Smartphone Technology Program and other initiatives related to food access, COVID-19 education, and access to technology. A published author, Athena received her Master's of Scientific Administration from Central Michigan University, and she's really lifted the voices of the communities most vulnerable through her leadership on 11 boards and task forces. Today, Heatherland and Athena will co-present on the Health Equity Report, which they have developed for Flint and Genesee County. I think you're going to sense the sense of passion that they bring to this project and support for the community. Please welcome Heatherland and Athena.
All that to say, we have a whole lot of fun here in Flint doing this work. So, thank you so much for this opportunity to come and talk about our work and talk about the report card. We have been excited to do this for some time, so we're excited to be here. Before we get into looking at the report card, I do want to acknowledge our partners who helped us create it. That includes Moses Bingham at the Community Foundation of Greater Flint, Nicole Smith-Anderson and her team at the Greater Flint Health Coalition, my colleagues here at MSU, Doctors Dick Sadler, Amy Drahoda, Jennifer Edwards-Johnson, Blair Warren, and our communications person Jill Vndraszek. And Jill was really critical in helping to position the report card in a larger conversation about access to information, as well as Athena, who is here joining me. And Athena has just done such a marvelous job mobilizing and embedding the report card into the community even further. So we're going to start our conversation by looking at what you see on the screen here. So this is the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services depiction of the social determinants of health. Now, when we think about the determinants of health, this includes the, it's the conditions in the environments where we all do life, right? Where we're born, live, work, age, worship, and play. And it's those conditions that determine how long we live and how well we live, our quality of life. But, and so, let me just give you some examples. So, access to healthy food, safe housing, violence, discrimination, racism, polluted air, and the list can go on. And when we address these areas, that's when we move the needle together on health equity. But there's a missing piece, and we saw this during the pandemic, which is information. And this is where those conversations with Jill really just blossomed, because we were able to reflect on MSU's leadership in ensuring that evidence-based information and resources were equitably accessible to everyone.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us this morning. I bring to you the energy from our beloved matriarch of our community, Dr. Eheel Deloney. Heatherland, as she mentioned, we've been able to walk alongside each other for the last three years, starting with COVID-19. So what we mean here about digital equity is accessibility to information that is understandable, culturally and locally relevant across multiple sectors and populations. Very often, information or data is buried in a website somewhere and does not reach those who need it most. It does not take into account digital literacy, digital access, and language literacy, the needs of our community. We want to, we want to make sure that the information is usable, actionable information, and it is critical to communities, especially for those here in Flint. Where access to local data can support data-driven decisions, guide program development, support and alter local funding priorities, and influence policy decisions. But we needed an easy way to share that information and communicate the data to the community, initiating digital tools such as the HERC. Digital tools are not new to the Flint researchers, Flint-focused researchers here at MSU. In 2018, the Flint East App was launched in partnership with researchers like Dick Sadler and others, and it still provides information to communities surrounding Flint and Genesee County food systems, including community, food pantries, recipes, and helpful food tips. Today, we'll focus our conversation on several sectors focusing on health disparities, the Let's start by defining what a Health Equity Report Card is and Let's start by defining what a Health Equity Report Card is and how it benefits communities like Flint. The HERC identifies and communicates the state of health disparities and differences between different groups by both data and maps. So we are able to document and understand differences between geographic groups, such as Flint and Genesee County, as well as the state of Michigan, and also our largest populations here, Black and white residents. But our ultimate goal is to support the community prevention and interventions that improve, attempt to improve health equity for our residents.
So how we went about doing that, let me just tell you, creating this report card was an adventure, but it was a fun adventure that we got to do with our partners. So we did a search of 26 online publicly accessible data sources, places like the state of Michigan, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Census, and from that search, we identified 50 different data indicators. Once we had those indicators, we then calculated a very simple disparity ratio, as the rate of one group over the rate of another group. And the resulting number, then, we linked to the grading scale that you see on the slide, where an A is no real disparity, all the way up to an F, hey, we got to do something about this. If this isn't being addressed, this doesn't just need to be on your radar, it's on your to-do list, and it's at the top. One thing I do want to note, so as we move into looking at the data and the information, just because we see an A or a B, it doesn't necessarily mean that there's adequate health services or resources in that category. It's just telling us, is there a difference between these two groups? So just keep that in mind. So the next thing, we had 50 indicators, so we had to figure out, how do we make this a little bit easier to understand and easier to use? So we, along with our partners, we categorized them, and you can see the six categories that we have here. So it's health services and access, physical health, mental health, health outcomes, socioeconomic status, and I saved maternal and child health for the last, because that's where we're going to focus the next couple of slides of our conversation. So what you're seeing here, and hopefully you can see it, this is the maternal and child health data that's broken down by location. And you can see that we have a comparison between Genesee County and Flint, Genesee County in Michigan, and Genesee County in the U.S. And I'll draw, you know, as we look at it, we're seeing what, mostly As, a couple Bs and a few Cs. I'll draw your attention to the top C there, and there's an asterisk there, and that's telling us that Genesee County faces more incidence of child abuse versus the U.S. Whereas if you look on the far right, we see that Flint is facing more incidence of children in poverty and infant mortality. There's no asterisks there, and so that's how we identified which group was doing worse or which group was doing better. Couple of things that also might stand out to you, those gray boxes, that was data that we couldn't find when we did that first search. The other thing that might stand out to you is that we're talking about maternal and child health, and we have seven indicators. And we know that so much more goes into telling the story of maternal and child health in our community than what you see on the screen. But again, that was what was publicly accessible when we did our first search. On the next slide, you're going to see these same variables broken down by race, and it's a breakdown between Black and white population, it's a comparison between the two, because those are the two largest groups in our community. And this one always gets me. This is why we do the work we do, why Dr. Mona, Doctors Johnson, Andersma, Key, and so many others are working alongside our community members. I've done this reason, too, I don't know how many times, and every time you see this, because our community members are represented here. These are their life experiences. Where in Flint and Genesee County, we see more teenage births, more births to Black teenagers. We see across the county more low birth weight Black babies, more Black children in poverty, and more infants and children, more Black infants and children dying.
We'll pause for a moment. When we think about maternal and child health, we have the worst disparities of all six categories that we study, of these six categories. And that's why projects like the Miracle Initiative, the Seven Year NIH Project, is so important. Together, we are creating interventions to address maternal morbidity and mortality, especially for Black moms in Flint and rural Michigan. But a picture is worth a thousand words, and throughout the HERC, you will find maps to help communicate our story. The city of Flint is centered in the middle of the map. You will see here that the concentration of Black residents is indicated by the gray color. The purple shows life expectancy, where the darker the purple, the longer you are expected to live. In the area that this, in this area, there's a difference of about 20 years. That spans from 65 years in the light purple to nearly 85 years in the darker purple. But the work isn't stopping here. This information is moving forward. Flint Innovative Solutions has been supporting the community with digital literacy training for over five years. This also includes training on how to use the HERC, how to interpret the data, and support digital literacy for community to optimize this tool. Additionally, our research team in Project Two of the Miracle Initiative, which I happen to be the community PI, introduced the HERC to contestants in our Flint appathon. The data provided in the HERC help those contestants design, is, we're currently in the process, designing the digital intervention and introduction for the PC Prime Healthy, Michigan Healthy Moms, or My Mom mobile app, which aims to reduce pregnancy deaths and complications with the focusing, again, of helping Black and rural moms.
I hope that as you look through the report card, you see lots of opportunities. Opportunity for more data, for better data, to fill in those gray cells, to add to those categories. If you look at the mental health category, I think we have four, and we know that there's so many more variables that should be added to that. And our community partners are committed to helping us fill in those gaps. So I want to share a quick story. Nicole Smith-Anderson, I mentioned her, she's with the Greater Flint Health Coalition. She was in a meeting with the National Kidney Foundation of Michigan, right, talking about something completely different. Kidney Foundation just launched this wonderful data dashboard, and Nicole sends an email and says, hey, the two of you should get together. Kidney Foundation wants to spread their word, and you need more, you need more data in the HERC. So we, in the next iteration of the report card, I'm so happy to report that we'll be including that kidney data in our, in our next report card, because our community is committed to doing this work and investing in these tools and doing this work together. But MSU was too. So because of funding through MSU's ACORN initiative led by Dr. Cara Polland, we were able to create a substance use disorder-specific report card. We did this with Odyssey House, another wonderful community partner, and it's focused on the Port Huron and St. Clair, St. Clair County community. So it's on our website, I hope that you get a chance to check it out. But we're also committed to our students. So we've been able to share the information from the report card with our med students, exposing them to the disparities and the experiences of our community partners, who our med students are going to be living and learning and working and serving in. And we're also going to explore the opportunity for the med students to do some behind-the-curtain work and help us identify data, help us to format the report card, and support future iterations of its, of its creation, and as well as embedding the report card in our Master of Public Health courses. But I want to bring us back to community. So the report card isn't new, right? The data isn't new. We centralized it, and we put a focus on disparities, and it's certainly not new to our community partners, whose life experiences are represented on the pages of the report card. But what is new, and what is synergy unleashed, is that we're doing this together. We're co-creating these resources, these digital tools that Athena mentioned, with our community partners, so that together, we can guide change and we can improve health equity for everyone.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to present. I do want to lift up some of the things that Heatherland and I have been able to work on. We mentioned COVID-19, working together on the NICE project. Through continued effort, we were able to translate that into Spanish, also into Arabic. As Heatherland pointed out, there's data missing, and so it's our job collectively to make sure that everyone is included in the report cards. Thank you so much for having us this morning.
Is there any, any questions?
I just wanted to have, so watching MSU's commitment to Flint in real time has honestly been a little bit life-changing, right? Many times, universities go into spaces like Flint, who has a global presence, right, because of the water crisis that happened here, but happens every, every, almost every urban place, right? This won't be the first, water crisis won't be the last, but it made global news. And so, a place like Michigan State, right, coming into this space, could be exploitative, right? Could be another model of colonizing data and using it for their own advantage. What I've seen here at Flint is what you just said, a true partnership. And I pay close attention to people's work. I pay close attention to Athena, who I, I don't know if you know, she's like a lightweight star. She's been on the news. I was like, hey, wait a minute, I know her. She's been on the news several times, talking about that app. But what I've paid attention to what community members have said, that MSU has really, really taken a framework of community-based partnership and community-based research, and lived it out in ways that I've never seen before. And I'm super, super proud of the work that MSU is doing, and I'm so happy for the residents of Flint, but I'm also super proud of you all. The residents of Flint have said to MSU, this is what we need, this is how we need it, and this is how you will partner with us, and that's exactly how it should be. I commend you and your work, and I've been inspired for the last two days.
I just have a comment, because I just want to follow up on Trustee Bassar's comments. In my, in my real job, I represent communities, some do it better than others, but it was so impressive here in Flint, the MSU relationship with the community, they were front and center, and I just love that, and that's why it's successful. So I appreciate that, thank you.
I want to echo Trustee Bassar and Trustee Kelly's comments. I also want to just evoke state jealousy coming from a community similar to Flint and Muskegon, where we don't have anything like this. If you all could replicate what you're doing so successfully in other communities such as Benton Harbors and the Muskegans, and also have very similar issues, this state would be so much better for it. I commend the partnerships. So many times, as Trustee Bassar indicated, people come in and they do something, and they tell people what they're going to do, and they do it their way, rather than involving the community in it and letting them have buy-in. And you see that connection that you all have, and I just commend the leadership that has forged ahead and done this, and the success that you all have had. It's just, it's mesmerizing to me what you've been able to do here. So I just want to thank you. I can tell that you all are so compassionate, and that what you're doing is because of the love that you have for the community that you're serving, so I want to thank you all for that, and sharing with us what you're doing here in Flint. It's very inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'd like to just follow all three trustees' comments, to say that this is a working laboratory that you created here with the community, you know, world-class faculty, and you're testing hypotheses, you know, which interventions, you know, are best at solving these challenges. And how do you take that following up, you know, I think to Trustee Scott's comment, how do you then take this on the road and make sure that it touches down on other communities across the state or the nation?
It's like you know our hearts, because that's exactly what we want to do. We started talking yesterday, and we're, yes, we definitely, yeah, yeah, we did, we talked about Benton Harbor and Muskegon. But here's the thing, we begin with relationships, we begin with conversations, and we begin, we begin with identifying exactly what community needs, and then we come alongside with our expertise, with our experience, and we, we support the directions that the data, these are data-driven discussions that we have, where the data is leading us.
I'll just add, from the community standpoint, as fine in the commonality, we all hurt, and we all bleed the same, and there are resources that are available for us to tap into. The data is so important, and doing education, and education about the importance of research to communities of color, and those who feel left behind and researched on. One of our models here in Flint is no research about us without us. And so having us at the table initially to make sure that what, not only we understanding researchers hurt, but also you understanding ours and moving forward with those initiatives.
We're here to partner with you, as I said, we are the University for Michigan. It's just starting here in Flint, and we're going to take it across the state. So thank you for all you're doing, congratulations.
Okay, so we're going to move on the agenda, I'm going to turn to Interim Provost Geitschko, who will present the personnel actions.
I present for approval, the following two, 2024 personnel actions.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel action?
Support.
Second, any discussion?
We go through.
Yeah, I'm going to go through.
I present for approval, the following tenured faculty. Mary Garcia, PhD, Associate Professor, Department of Biochemistry, Agriculture Biology, with tenure effective August 16, 2024. Shri Ram Kalyanarama, PhD, Brand Professor, Department of Media and Communication, with tenure effective August 16, 2024. Juan Mundell, PhD, Associate Professor, Department of Advertising and Public Relations, with tenure effective August 16, 2024. Paige Holly Wong, PhD, Professor, Department of Agricultural, Food, and Resource Economics, with tenure effective August 16, 2024. I'm also pleased to share the list of faculty who have been promoted as Associate Professors with tenure. Please turn your attention to the screen to recognize these outstanding faculty members. I present for approval the following personnel actions. Glenn Chambers, PhD, Inherm Dean, Residential College in the Arts and Science, Arts and Humanities, for an additional title of Inherm Dean, Honors College, effective June 10, 2024. Matthew Dong, PhD, School Director and Professor, School of Packaging, for a change in title to Inherm Dean, College of Agricultural and Natural Resources, effective July 1, 2024. Kimberly Dodd, PhD, Director, Veterinary Diagnostic Laboratory, for a change in title to Dean, College of Veterinary Medicine, effective August 1, 2024. Alan Haller, MA, Vice President and Director of Intercollegiate Athletics, Amendment to Contract, Section 3.3, effective June 28, 2024. Norman Hubbard, MBA, Senior Associate Vice President, Health Sciences, for a change in title to Senior Vice President, Health Sciences, effective July 1, 2024. Jen Wade Lin, PhD, Chairperson and Professor, Department of Linguistics, Languages, and Cultures, for a change in title to Inherm Dean, College of Arts and Letters, effective July 1, 2024. David Suter, PhD, Professor, Department of Management, and Edith Elbrode, Dean of the Eli Brode College of Business, with tenure effective July 8, 2024. And Aaron Sousa, MD, FACP, Dean, College of Human Medicine, for an additional title of Executive Dean, Office of the Provost, effective July 1, 2024. Also included in your materials are information reports for academic personnel actions.
All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Okay, we'll turn now-
Okay, we'll turn now to committee reports, and I'll turn to Trustee Pierce, who will now present the Committee on Budget and Finance. Trustee Pierce.
Thank you, President. As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board of Trustees establish a fund functioning as an endowment entitled Dr. Betty Z. Dow Din Endowment.
Your second.
Forward.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board establish a fund functioning as an endowment entitled Community Music School Detroit Operations.
Your second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Passes.
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board hereby adopts the attached Michigan State University Fiscal Year 2024-2025 operating budget, including tuition and fee rates for the 2024-25 academic year as presented in your materials in Appendix A on the website. Be it further resolved that the administration is directed to implement the Michigan State University Fiscal Year 2024-25 operating budget.
So, I lost a lot of sleep thinking about this tuition increase, particularly in a space like Flint, where we just heard all of the really heartbreaking stats that, I love President Guskowitz's attitude that Michigan State University is the state's school, which means as a land-grant institution, everyone should be able to come, and we should be able to support them to graduation. Being here in Flint, seeing, going through a poverty simulation, which shows how hard it is to be, to live without, and how, what, how much work it is that systematically and systemically raises the classism, how they really impact who can go to school. It's, it's very difficult for me to vote yes on a tuition increase, when you have Black students at a 65% graduation rate, Latinx students at an 67% graduation rate. And are we ever going to get to an average for everyone of 82% within our strategic plan? I don't know. What I do know is that I trust the accountability of this administration. President Guskowitz has assured me that more than 2 million of the revenue for this tuition increase will go to the highest students, to assist them in their financial, I mean, the ones with the greatest need. And so, the Black Student Initiative, the Camp Program, the Magic Program, the Bridge Programs, I'm, I'm going to hold us accountable to funding those and finding other solutions, because even those, those programs are obviously not, are not sufficient, right? When we have these graduation rates and completion rates for folks in there stopping out, their number one reason for stopping out is financial need. Those aren't sufficient. So, while I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote yes, and you don't even know how, I literally did not sleep. I'm going to vote yes. I'm, I'm doing that, President Guskowitz, because I believe that you will keep your word, that you did come to this university to support those who are the most marginalized and those who are minoritized on our campus, and that this tuition increase will go to the heaviest folks in the ways that you said, and that we are not going to see, continue to see for decades these numbers that we've seen. It's a new day. I want you to be supported. I'm going to vote yes. I'm going to hold everyone at this table accountable to that. Does, does that make sense to you? And you are knowing what's coming? Okay, all right. I just want you, I just want everyone to be clear that I, my guidance is not to the bottom. And so, thank you for your commitment, President Guskowitz. Thank you for your leadership, and I'm looking forward to new and improved chances for people like the residents of Flint to be at MSU as a student.
Further discussion?
You still want to comment again? Said it better than I can say it. Again. So, I've been on this board for 18 months. In this 18 months, we've dramatically raised the cost of room and board in our dorms. We've put a new fee on students for the Wellness Center, particularly the older ones. And now, there's a tuition increase. This is just in 18 months, and I was adamantly going to vote no on this tuition increase. After long talks with, and on top of it, very disturbed numbers of our graduation rates for our African-American students and our Latinx students. And honestly disappointed with some of the responses I received from this administration, and why those numbers are so low, and what the solutions are for those problems. After talking with President Guskowitz, what they're fan of and a big supporter of, I am going to vote yes on this tuition increase. It's been a really, really difficult decision for me, but I'm doing it to support you and because I believe in you, and because you made a commitment to help me figure this out and help more to improve this. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I'll have a comment. First of all, I appreciate Trustee Dano and Bassar's comments. There'll be more information with regard, specifically with regard to the tuition increases. I've defined them as modest, because as you look at them compared to the other colleges in the state, they are modest. And so, I think that the Board has stuck together. I very much appreciate the support of the two trustees that have already spoken. It's always difficult to have a tuition increase. As I've sat on this board, I believe, three times in the last seven years, we've had no tuition increase. I think that's accurate. And as a result, we've built a deficit, and we, and we have to be fiscally responsible to address that deficit. I don't know that the increase that we're talking about in this budget even begins to address that deficit. It probably doesn't. But as has already been said, I have full confidence in the new president, the new administration, to address some of those deficits by way of cost cuts, as opposed to just unreasonable tuition increases. So, as you look at the increases that are in this budget, let's compare them to the other colleges across the state, and you'll see that I believe Michigan State University has been very responsible in terms of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I did want to say this, same.
I want to thank Lisa for your work on this budget. It was thoughtful and intentional. You really did take a lot of care to make sure that we're using this money, as Chair Kelly said, responsibly. And so, I appreciate all your work and your commitment.
Let me just add, as the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, that not only was there a great deal of debate in the Budget and Finance Committee, but among the entire Board, and this was not easy for any of us. And as Dan said, Trustee Kelly said, we have to be fiscally responsible, and yet we do think that when we compare ourselves to all of the others in the state of Michigan, we're being as reasonable as we can be to try to get at this deficit.
I just kind of want to piggyback on what Trustee Kelly, Trustee Pierce said, and just for the purposes of those of you that are out in the audience, to understand, yes, this was difficult, but I think we are trying to address what is an underfunding by the state of Michigan to higher ed, and in particular, Michigan State University, based on a formula that is absolutely unfair. And when you look at what we receive compared to our other R1 institutions in this state, it is, to me, incomprehensible why anyone would think that this is fair, when we agitate and retain more students in the state of Michigan than the other two R1 universities that remain in this state, that we are funded less than they are. And this is what forces this university to have to make these very tough decisions. And so, I want people to appreciate where we are being placed as administration and as the Board, in putting us in these positions to make these very, very difficult decisions based on our legislature not placing enough care and value on the education of higher ed and Michigan State University.
Discussion? Okay, all those, all those in favor? All in favor? Opposed? You wanted to actually, I think, I'm going to turn to Secretary Fletcher, I think he wants to do a roll.
Trustee Byron.
Yes.
Trustee Dano.
Yes.
Trustee Kentucky Jefferson.
Yes.
Trustee Kelly.
Yes.
Trustee Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee T. Baye. Trustee Bassar. The vote is unanimous, it's been zero to zero.
I want to thank the Board for your support. I want to thank Vice President Price and her team for working tirelessly over the past five months to get us there. I think this is a very responsible budget that continue to move us forward and to, again, support our students, allowing us to still be strategic, bold, and student-focused. I'll say it for the last time today, but thank you, everyone. With that, I'll turn it back to Trustee Pierce.
As Chairperson of the Trustee and Budget and Finance Committee, I move that the Board hereby authorizes the administration to both plan as well as proceed for the project entitled Combine Heat and Power Unit and West Regional Chilled Water Plant.
Your second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board hereby authorizes the administration to plan the project entitled Spartan Stadium Advancement Renovations.
Your second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board hereby authorizes the administration to complete renovations to the building at 4660 Hagadorn Road upon such terms and conditions as may be acceptable to the president or his designee.
Your second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Budget and Finance, I move that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the administration to proceed with the project entitled Ephraim Ship Testing Facility.
Your second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
The committee also received the Construction and Facilities Report and an update on the Henry Ford Health Clinical Integration Agreement. And then, let me just make a statement based on my last conversation at the Board meeting. I indicated there would be a review of our investment portfolio with our Chief Financial Officer, as well as our Chief Investment Officer. That assessment of the portfolio has been completed, including a high-level review of all of our fund managers. And the Board is satisfied with the portfolio, and it aligns with our approved processes and policies. As you know, the Board has embarked on a systemic review and update of all of our university policies. The policies governing investments are included in that process. We will bring additional updates on our reviews in the, in a future Board meeting. Our endowment is made up of money given to the university by many generous donors. As stewards and fiduciaries of those donations given to the university, we are bound to honor their requests, which name the university as sole beneficiary. Strong performance of the endowment supports the university's core mission, helps to fund the academic programs and many scholarships. Any potential changes to the university's investment policy will continue to uphold our fiduciary duty. The current conflict in the Middle East and additional conflicts around the world...
The Board of Trustees, the DEAFME, the Board of Trustees...
The Board of Trustees!
...is out of line with their own policy!
It's out of line with their own policy!
It's made within the contracts!
It's made within the contracts!
It's fiduciary responsibility!
It's fiduciary responsibility!
The Board will exhibit social conscience!
The Board will exhibit social conscience!
In the administration of the university's investment!
In the administration of the university's investment!
One, we are the people!
One, we are the people!
Two, we won't stop fighting! Three, we're never funding now, 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 now!
One, we are the people! Two, we won't stop fighting! Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now! One, we are the people! Two, we won't stop fighting! Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now! One, we are the people! Two, we won't stop fighting! Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now!
Where do we want it?
Where do we want it?
We don't get it!
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down!
Daddy Peters, you can't hide!
Daddy Peters, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Daddy Peters, you can't hide!
Daddy Peters, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trustee Scott, you can't hide!
Trustee Scott, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trustee Byron, you can't hide!
Trustee Byron, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, this is a final directive to refrain from disrupting the meeting.
You are a fucking genocide!
If the meeting is disrupted further, the meeting will be adjourned to allow for the Board's consideration of the scheduled action items on the agenda.
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trustee Bassar, you can't hide!
Trustee Bassar, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trustee General, you can't hide!
Trustee General, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
And it's you, your head on the ground!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
Free, 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 outside!
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 One, we are the people!
Two, we won't stop fighting!
Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now!
One, we are the people!
Two, we won't stop fighting!
Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now!
We are the people!
We won't stop fighting!
Three, ain't no funding now, 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 now!
We are the people!
We won't stop fighting!
We are a fucking genocide!
We are a fucking genocide!
Look at this! Fucking cowards! You're afraid, Trustee, to say the move we used to. The resident and our president, Black, shame! Shame! I'm sorry, free Trustee, my bad. And the fighting now, 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 now! MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Fuck, I'm a fucking joker!
I'm a fucking joker!
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Look at this, fucking coward! We're afraid trustee is staying in the room, we need to, the rest of them and our president's lap. Shh! Shh! I'm sorry, free trustees, my bad, you were sorry to... Oh, no.
Leading adjourned!
Leading adjourned! They can't stand up to their own hippos because we hold them accountable!
I prepared a comment. At least with yourself. At least with yourself. I'm gonna share my comments.
We still have... No, I don't think that, I don't think that the mean...
They just... So we stand? There you go. Okay. I do have a, I have a great comment, please. I'd love to share. Actually have, I actually have three individuals here, they're from Gaza.
You may share.
They're Jewish, they're Jewish.
Oh, they do sign in very often.
Oh, yeah. They're really good.
I took a great...
Interesting how our university can even speak to them. The one time every few months that we get to speak to them, they just run away.
Yeah.
And they're always going to limit public comments as well.
Yes.
They don't want us to tell them how we should invest on lending to the university because we have the research, because we look into the fact that they're complicit in genocide with their investments in Israel, Western manufacturers. As soon as we hold them accountable, they decide to leave because they don't want to hear us. This isn't a truly positive university, as it's a boss.
Yeah!
If they really cared about students, instead of leaving the room, they would stay here and listen to us. And if they really cared about students, we wouldn't have to be here disrupting. Instead, they choose time and time again that their interests and their alliances are with genocide and profit over students, faculty, staff, and the community. Their interests and their alliances are with debt and destruction over people. Their interests and alliances are with money, not people. They continuously put profit over the people of this state, over the people of this university, and over people across the world. Shh! 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 We are saying this time they put people over profit. Then this time they put life and prosperity over death and destruction. Instead, they run like cowards from us. Shh! Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
MSU, what do you say?
MSU, what do you say?
How many kids have you killed today?
How many kids have you killed today?
Until we want!
MSU!
Until we want it!
Now!
Until we want!
MSU!
Until we want it!
Now!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
I can't hear you, if we don't get it...
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down!
No!
Shut it down! 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 Shut it down!
Shut it down!
For the rest of us, we're gonna, we're gonna go find this room. Yes.
That's, it's behind a key part of the door.
Oh, interesting. Well, we'll stay as close as possible. One, we are the people! Two, we won't stop fighting! Three, ain't no fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down! 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 Shut it down!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! Shut it, trusties, you can't hide!
Trusty, trusties, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
How many kids have you killed today?
How many kids have you killed today?
Trusty, trusties, you can't hide!
Trusty, trusties, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
How many kids have you killed today?
How many kids have you killed today?
How many women have you killed today?
How many women have you killed today?
How many nephews have you killed today?
How many nephews have you killed today?
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Free, free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! One, we are the people! We won't stop fighting! And the fighting now, 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 now! MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down!
If we don't get it...
Shut it down! 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 Shut it down!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Trusty, trusties, you can't hide!
Trusty, trusties, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
Trusty, trusty, what do you say?
How many kids have you killed today?
How many kids have you killed today?
MSU, you can't hide!
MSU, you can't hide!
You are a fucking genocide!
You are a fucking genocide!
MSU, your hands are red!
MSU, your hands are red!
Forty thousand people dead!
Forty thousand people dead!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Free, free Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
Long live Palestine!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
I understand!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
I understand!
Who? The trustees?
Is Jesse here or no?
Okay.
Good.
Where's Jesse? Yeah, get Jesse. What's happening?
Uh, this is... Yeah, it's pretty good, so they can talk.
Um, I need some water, someone give me some water.
I'm starting off. You guys look real gay. Uh, there's gonna be more mouths. I told you, I was like, I know, I know, because we didn't see your mouth, yes, we did. If I'm told across the country, like, yeah, they're all, she's like, she's in a little tight. What do you want? I felt bad. Probably not. Have you considered that? Call this thing, this place. Tell me, maybe this is accurate. Let's go back and tell me who's right. There's a... Man, I'll call you, you know, why don't we sit? This is a different... Our first amendment.
So, so we start on a reconvene, our meeting down here, and hope that we'll have, that we will be able to allow us without disruption to do that, so that we have a public comment, and I know many of you would have liked to have the opportunity for that public comment. So that's what, uh, I will reconvene, reconvene in another location, we'll take the meeting virtual, and that may prevent the opportunity for the public comment, and I know many of you would...
We'd like to reconvene, we'd like to reconvene in that room again. You've had your statement, and I'd like to finish mine with all due respect.
With all due respect, we would like to meet with you.
There was not much respect.
We have requested multiple times, we have a meeting that President Duskoz has already agreed with us. We have a request that you be there along with other members of the budget committee to talk about the heads of presidents.
Yeah, I will do that.
And then we can...
I will, okay. It's very frustrating, we don't wanna be that, do I, I don't wanna be on a Friday morning, and I don't wanna be disrupt, like, I don't wanna do this to come and disrupt board meetings or anything like that, but it's, whatever the options that you have provided us with the topic, come time after time, it's, uh, it's coming from a place of frustration, and especially since it's, um, we feel like there's an assumption made about us that we don't know what we're talking about, that we're doing this out of like, ill intention, or this form of like, that investment's going to be something that's meant to come at another committee or come at another committee, when actually, if you were to sit down with us and look at the things that we have, the research that we have, professors of the research, how we can invest into our local community as well, we can use this in a helpful way, and we can talk about how, we can like, actually just talk about it, it wasn't that, and that's very like, like, that's just, it's very upsetting because I went through this, and MSU is like a second home to me. When I started attending MSU, is when I started getting close, so it's, and I know we're at a lot of schools, so I think that it's...
And I agree, so I can mention that on my day, I told trustees yesterday, that we had a very constructive meeting on Monday, and that if we had a meeting, trustee Pierce just said that she would participate in that next meeting, so what we're requesting is that we can, you'll allow us to finish our meeting with our business to conduct, and so it was, can you come into that?
Let's take a quick vote. Um, everyone who's supported that, say aye. Um, no, this is where, personally, I think we should, in agreement together, our two men, so we all agree?
Yes. There's a family that, for you, from Melissa, they state because her scholarship about Pakistan, about shock, so if they can refer to you, I would ask if they would speak, kind of, as words yet, I'm not sure if they can refer, but that's not good at all. I would ask right now.
I will ask, you know, secretary Fletcher, we're jarred on that, but so, if that's, we're understanding, but if there is any disruption, we will, we can, we'll adjourn, temporarily adjourn the meeting down there, and we'll go to other locations to conduct that work, along with that work, so...
Maybe I'll just send you this, so we can...
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, thank you. What's the thing? What's the thing?
I'll show it.
Oh.
Very proud of yourself.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are they, um, the source?
Do you hear anything from us?
That's what I thought. Uh, maybe one more.
I haven't, I don't like, I said, I said, I'm fine. Do you?
They count there, they count there.
Thank you, thank you. And it's like a process that you have to sort of create these pretty, and there's a lot of effort. It's these people, they're like this for every four minutes, and then I just support that.
Just so we don't disturb them anymore.
Take care.
I'll interview you later.
Okay. You just let me know.
Okay.
I'm gonna stop Jesse.
Chucklin. All right.
Can you come in? Only you are.
Yeah, you can.
I'll call my people.
Hey, um, thereabouts, go back into the meeting. Um, I didn't know.
Half the lines on like.
Yeah, honestly, like, it's pretty much, yeah, I would have done that if it was, you know.
Oh, yeah. Screen frame, trapped in a pack.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene the meeting, and I'm gonna turn, uh, back over to trustee Pierce to finish her report.
Thank you, I just have, um, a statement that I would like to make. The current packet in Middle East and the additional packets around the world are horrific. We recognize the pain and the loss and the trauma that people on all sides are experiencing. We also understand that people have differing views, and we're cognizant of the varying viewpoints on how the university can best support our students, our faculty, and our staff. President Guskowitz and I have committed that we will meet with representatives of the constituencies that wanna have a conversation around our investments. And, uh, and I will invite any other up to the board members that would like to join. Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna turn to trustee Renee Mackey-Jefferson for the Committee on Academic Affairs.
Thank you, and good morning. I have four votes to lead us through and, uh, with the comments about the Committee on Academic Affairs. As chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Academic Affairs, I move that the Board of Trustees hereby approves provisions to B O T one oh one, Amendment of Board of Trustees Policies as indicated in Attachment A, and I would note that Secretary Fletcher is available for discussion as of today.
Any discussion?
I would just say to the board that this is, uh, this really is focused on the, uh, as you saw in the, the packet, the amended packet, this is focused on the reporting structure for the Board Secretary of the Technical Amendment. The, uh, the issue around sort of public comment and the discussion around that, I think the committee has agreed for further consideration, and I don't know if trustee Connecty Jefferson maybe has additional comments on that.
I do, assuming that is a last statement at the end, but I will just say that the board has listened to input around you proposal to induce a timeline of public comment, and under further consideration, the board will call me a vote on that particular measure to allow for additional discussion consideration.
Any further discussion? Uh, trustee Bennett?
So I'm gonna vote no on this. Um, well, first, I think everyone knows I was opposed to limiting public comment to begin with. I'm gonna vote no on this, and I wanna say that, um, I'm a big fan of our chief of staff, Stefan Fletcher. I think you've made me a better trustee, so this is nothing. Directed towards you, my issue is, um, if we are to do our constitutional, um, if we as a board, or do we fulfill our constitutional responsibility to oversee this university, we need employees who can give us unfiltered, um, unfiltered information. And my concern is by having a dual reporter, which we had under the national crisis, and so I obviously wasn't a trustee then, but I've heard from others, and that was part of, small, part of the bigger problem, was that they weren't getting unfiltered information. So, um, that is why I'm voting no.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Extentions? One extension? Okay. Motion passed?
I think I have seven, sorry, six more.
Yes, thank you. Trustee, uh, Connecty Jefferson.
As the Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Academic Affairs, I move that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the transition of B O T six oh two endorsement, sponsorship, and advertising from a Board of Trustees Policy to University-wide policy, very effective July first of twenty twenty four. Being both of us all, the board authorizes Vice President for Marketing, PR, Digital Strategy to complete transition of this policy to a new updated university-wide policy approved by the president and signed a new number in the university policy library by the policy, uh, policy library coordinator. And we have finally resolved that the board directs Vice President for Marketing, PR, and Digital Strategy to work with university stakeholders to ensure the updated university-wide policy is communicated and implemented as soon as practical or after presidential approval. And I would note that those ways available for discussion.
What's that? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, or I mean, abstentions? No. Opposed? Extentions? None? One, one extension? Okay. So seven, zero, one. The motion passes.
As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Academic Affairs, I move that the Board of Trustees hereby approves of the provisions to the Faculty Rising Responsibilities Document as outlined in Attachment A, and I would note that in our proposed, you have opposed, in order for discussion during.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion passes.
And then, uh, one final quote. As Chairperson of the Trustee Committee on Academic Affairs, I move that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the bylaws amendment as enclosed with this resolution in Attachment A. And I, I would note that Secretary Fletcher will therefore, with any discussion.
Second?
And this is sort of a point of clarification, so I think I, I even jumped out of order on the first one, so, um, uh, I think what we would do with the board's indulgence, this is really, uh, should be pertaining to the amendment of the Board of Trustees Policies of Bylaws, so the technical change, uh, again, that was, uh, that was made to that policy, putting it into the new standard policy format, there's no substantive changes around, uh, sort of how the board approves its policies.
That's what we're voting on now.
Yes. And I just sort of wanna just restate that, cause I, uh, I pulled out of order slightly, so.
Do you, are you confused?
Yes.
What, can you explain so that everyone understands what they're voting on?
Yeah, so we, uh, this vote would actually be on, um, the B O T one oh one item, uh, sort of earlier, uh, earlier on, what I, what I was describing was the bylaws amendment change for the dual reporting structure, so I think it's cleaner to sort of have the vote now, uh, on the, um, the policy amendment. And again, the policy amendment solely is converting, uh, the policy entitled Amendment of Board of Trustees Policies into the new policy format, no substantive changes to how the board approves its policies, that is the vote now, so I just, yeah.
So basically, though, on the agenda, we've switched.
Yeah, I've switched to one.
Which one? For voting purposes. You are, you did the vote, you wanted to.
I did?
Yes, you did, you are on record.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? The motion passes.
Right on the comments of the Committee for Updates on Strategic Academic Initiatives as well as Realization, this concludes our report.
Thank you, trustee Connecty Jefferson. With that, I'll turn to trustee Brianna Scott for the Committee on Audit Risk and Compliance.
As Chairwoman of the Trustee Committee on Audit Risk and Compliance, I move that the board hereby approves revisions to Bat one oh four, Board of Trustees Auditor Rotation as indicated in Attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? The motion passes.
As Chairwoman of the Trustee Audit Risk and Compliance Committee, I move that the board hereby approves the following: An exclusive action agreement with Targeted Alpha Therapeutics, Inc., a purchasing agreement with Scarlet Spartan Solutions, LLC, an action agreement with CytoHub, Inc., an independent contractor agreement for artist services with Dr. Richard Sherman, a service agreement with Great Lakes Crystal Technologies, a sponsored research agreement with Paradigm Productions, LLC, a purchasing agreement with Culture Lee Resilient Training Cards, and a service agreement with Great Lakes Crystal Technologies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? The motion passes.
The committee discussed upcoming Powell's words, love. And it's off, thank you, President.
With that, I turn to trustee Kelly Kabe for the Committee on Student Life and Culture.
The Student Life and Culture Committee received a presentation on the Annual Diversity Report from B.T. Bennett, including the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Annual D E I Report Highlights. The team has been working hard, tracking over two hundred items across twelve executive sponsors and institution-wide action teams. They have created a level of accountability and transparency through the D E I Annual Report, D E I Scorecard, and D E I Dashboards. Uh, the second year of institutional D E I Strategic Priority Implementation Effort resulted in seventy-one percent of the two thousand, two hundred-plus action items being implemented or in progress, creating an inclusive excellence grant program distributed more than three hundred. excellence grant program, distributed more than 339,000 to fund 32 projects campus-wide. The full report can be found at inclusion.msu.edu. There is obviously still a lot more work to be done, as some of my trustees, fellow trustees had noted earlier, but we look forward to the upcoming planning and development of the university climate survey that is coming in spring of 2026, and there will be more details to follow. That concludes my report. Can I make an amendment to that? I just wanted to note, Miles will be speaking during the student liaison portion of the meeting, but I did want to note that Connor Lee did send some comments in to the Board. Apologize that I wasn't able to make it. He is working for the Michigan Senate, so as you can imagine, he's very busy right now at this time of year, but he did send his cards.
I'll turn it over to Chair Kelly.
And so with that, we're going to hear the student liaisons. Miles, your board.
It's my pleasure to be here in front of the Board for my first time as the new president for the Council of Graduate Students, succeeding Hannah Jeffrey, who had this role two years prior. I'm here to just give three updates on the actions of COGS from our most recent membership meeting, all of which kind of center around a core theme, which is the desire for students to feel that they belong at MSU. The first update is the release of COGS Equity and Antidiscrimination Report. This report is compiled yearly by our Director of Equity and Antidiscrimination with the help of our Equity and Antidiscrimination Committee. The role of this committee, run entirely by graduate and professional students, is to evaluate common trends in the experience and perception of belonging and discrimination among our constituents. Their hard work culminates in a framework of priorities for COGS' DEI-related efforts for the coming year. In the report, graduate and professional students wish to see more focus on the following: centralizing intersectionality in DEI conversations, more focus on the experiences of international students, more focus on power imbalances between students and faculty, especially in the context of advisor-advisee relationships, and finally, clarifying the connections between the intentions of DEI initiatives with the actual impacts they are likely to have on graduate and professional students. Furthermore, it was interesting in the report that students often noted their individual departments as one of their biggest sources of belonging at MSU, yet did not always experience high belonging at that department or program level. I think this desire among grad students to feel greater belonging is reflected in my second update, which is recent trends in our annual budget. The most recent update to our budget, voted and approved by the COGS School Council, saw increased support for social activities, including both activities organized by COGS and activities organized by smaller grad student organizations at the program or department level. These funds support a wide range of events for grad student organizations, including the celebration of culturally significant holidays, research symposia, workshops, and other professional development opportunities. It is my interpretation that these trends reflect the findings in our recent Equity and Antidiscrimination Report. The graduate and professional students we serve desire more belonging and often seek to acquire that belonging through the smaller communities within our campus they identify with. If we can support these individual communities, we can promote students' sense of belonging and ultimately their academic well-being. In terms of what COGS is doing to promote belonging, brings me to my third and final update, the annual COGS Fall Welcome Event. This event is happening on August 24th in Benefactor's Plaza, located near Chittenden Hall. Fall Welcome is an annual event organized by COGS for over the past decade, welcoming hundreds of graduate and professional students to our campus right before the fall semester. It will be a fun afternoon with a cookout, games, giveaways, and representatives from many resources and departments across campus. All graduate and professional students and their families are invited to attend this free event, and I look forward to welcoming them to our campus. If you have time, all members of the Board are welcome to come and meet the students as well, but I know that's a busy week for, for all of us. In closing, COGS is hearing a consistent message that its constituents desire greater belonging, and I look forward to further advocating toward this end over the coming year. This concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miles. Good report. Look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Next, we'll talk, or turn to the faculty liaison reports. Dr. Lipton?
Howdy, everybody. So this is my last board meeting of the year as faculty senate chair. I will be serving as vice chair in the coming year, so you're not rid of me yet. I would like to thank the Board for recognizing the need to do all that is possible to enable outstanding education and retention of faculty through tuition increases. While not popular, recognizing your fiduciary duty to the institution's solvency and well-being is critical to the university's success, so thank you for voting yes on that resolution. It is important to note that we would very much like to continue to work with you to expand support that Michigan, that Michigan State receives from the state of Michigan. The faculty have communicated our interest in engaging the legislature on why the formula that trustee Scott mentioned needs to be changed so that we can support the higher education mission at MSU. We hope to partner on this in the next academic year and not just during appropriation season. It is awesome to be here in Flint, where the College of Human Medicine, my college, the C S Mott Department of Public Health, and the community have come together to solve big problems. The world-class faculty in partnership with the community are making real-world strides in advancing the health and welfare of all members of the community. Dr. Mona, Dr. Jennifer Johnson, and Dr. Heatherland Uphold are a testament to that work. Their achievements and those of their colleagues elevate the university and demonstrate the value of community-based medical schools and land-grant universities. That is what we should be focused on, the excellence of this institution. Know that the faculty, our leads, are focused on this every single day. From the very beginning of my term as chair, we engaged the Board's troublingly slim conflict of interest policies and the bare bones code of ethics, and we saw, that we saw as gaps in and clear violations of those policies this year. My predecessor Karen Kelly Blake, in her statements, lamented the constant meddling in the day-to-day management of the university. Over the past year, we have observed a real dichotomy in the aspirations of university leaders, some like President Guskowitz, and most members of this Board worked to develop a framework for everyone to stay in their lanes and let people do their jobs. I know that most members of this Board, the administration, the faculty, staff, and students want to work together to advance our missions of scholarship, education, and service to our fellow Michiganders. We may not agree on how, but we agree on the need to do the hard work. Others seek to tear down this hard work, factionalizing our community, seeking advantage, but advantage for what? Being right? Feeling validated? Embarrassing your colleagues? Yesterday, we worked with the Board in good faith to try and ensure that shared governance between the Board, the administration, the faculty, and the students is collegial, coordinated, and productive. By engaging with faculty and student governance leaders on governance issues at your retreat, you demonstrated your interest in working with us rather than around us. This is a solid step forward. However, certain members of this Board walked out and did not engage in this important work when faculty were present. That conscious, deliberate, and juvenile action was unfortunate, and I am certain, as hoped, it did not go unnoticed. It is exhausting and sad. I do hope that either through a realization of the purpose of their role at this university or through executive action of the state of Michigan, that the challenges that these individuals pose to the Board and our greater university community are solved in the coming year. We need more unity, not more division. I wish us all the best of luck. To President Guskowitz, thank you for your engagement, openness to communication, curiosity, and pathologically positive outlook. To most of the rest of you around this table, I believe you sincerely seek the success of this great university. Know that the faculty will work with you to seek solutions. I look forward to participating in this hard work as vice chair in the coming year. Thank you.
Are there any more reports from the faculty?
No.
No? Just one? No. All right, I think next, the chair's comments. I think I speak for the whole Board, and maybe there'll be some more comments, that the retreat here in Flint has kind of blown us away. I want to obviously make, acknowledge the hard work of Dr. Mona, Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Uphold, and the presenters here today. It's really the interaction with the community that struck me the most about this, but I also recognize the creativity of what MSU was doing here in the Flint community. So if you bear with me, I'll give you a little story. One of the, one of the things that the chair has to do is constantly stay on schedule, and I worked with Stephen to organize that schedule. And when I got up yesterday morning, I looked at the schedule and I said, wait a minute, we're going to a clinic, and then we have to go to the farmer's market, and we've got to do all this within an hour? And it wasn't until I got there that I realized the clinic is in the farmer's market, which was great. So that's creativity. And then Dr. Mona went through the whole story of how helpful that is for the residents, because when they come to the clinic, they can then go right with a prescription from her office to fill out healthy foods for the following week. So that kind of creativity is what universities do, and I was very proud that we were involved in that. The second topic is the first hundred days of our great president. It's hard to keep up with him. He's got boundless energy. There's a whole list of things here. He's just completed his hundred days. As indicated, he's done over forty stops. He's demonstrated his commitment to students as well as faculty, and I think the entire Board, as we've heard from comment after comment, our trust in him, our, our, our trust to make really tough votes because we believe in his leadership, has brought this board together, in my personal opinion, and we are committed to working as one team. And that's very difficult for any board to do. So he has not only my full confidence, but I know that the entire Board has full confidence in him, and he's had a great first one hundred years of one hundred years.
You're pretty young, Kevin.
Well, he's done so much, but no.
I like his building.
All right, so he, he's, he's done a great job in the first one hundred days. All right, let's, I'm going to move on to Norm Beauchamp. Again, a whole list of accomplishments since Norm's been affiliated, and of course, he's left the university. So I just want to just note a couple of those accomplishments and the Board's appreciation for Dr. Beauchamp's work here at the university. First of all, he represented MSU in developing the new McLaren Greater Lansing Hospital, including our partnership with McLaren and MSU Healthcare and the Izzo Family Medical Center. He's also worked to develop Michigan, Michigan State's first off-campus P three, a public-private partnership, and the solicitation of 19.5 million gift from Doug Meyer and the Meyer Family Foundation, and the development of innovative ecosystem, echo system, is what now, what is now called the Doug Meyer Medical Innovation Building. He also developed our relationship with Corwell Health in Grand Rapids, known as the Corwell Health MSU Alliance Corporation. And then finally, and very notably, he is the one that spearheaded the relationship with the Henry Ford Health, Henry Ford Health, and including the groundbreaking of a $335 million research facility. Following on the hard work of Chair Basser, I have the honor of sitting on that steering committee, and I was down there for the groundbreaking. It's a very impressive thing that we're doing down in the city of Detroit, and it will help that community tremendously. Lastly, we will hear a resolution from the Board read by Norm's old neighbor, Dennis Denno, recognizing his accomplishments here at MSU. So that concludes my reports, and thank you. Oh, and Norm's with us. Hi, Norm.
We're going to read it.
Dennis.
Do we do it now?
Yeah. Okay.
Michigan State University Board of Trustees expresses its deep appreciation to Executive Vice President for Health Sciences, Dr. Norm Beauchamp, for his unwavering dedication and invaluable contributions to MSU. Dr. Beauchamp's love for MSU, his alma mater, has been evident since he returned as Dean of the College of Human Medicine in 2016. Ensuring high-quality care close to home for those in mid-Michigan has always been important to Dr. Beauchamp. Promoted to Executive Vice President in the fall of 2019, Dr. Beauchamp has provided visionary leadership, expanding our medical footprint in the Flint, Greater Lansing, Grand Rapids, and Detroit communities. As a member of the MSU Research Foundation, Dr. Beauchamp represented MSU during the development of the new McLaren Greater Lansing Hospital, including partnering with McLaren and MSU Healthcare on the Izzo Family Medical Center. Dr. Beauchamp's steady hand has moved us closer to a unique partnership between Michigan State University and the University of Michigan in clinical neurosciences to allow a joint agreement between the two, between two R1 Big Ten universities. Excuse me. When Dr. Beauchamp served as the Dean of the College of Human Medicine, he evolved an idea that access to care could be improved every day, and it was this thinking that helped conceptualize the development of the Grand Rapids Innovation Partner. His work included the development of MSU's first off-campus P three, a public-private partnership, solicitation of a $19.5 million gift from Doug Meyer and the Meyer Family Foundation, and development of an innovation ecosystem in what is now the Doug Meyer Medical Innovation Building. Dr. Beauchamp also worked to develop a partnership with Corwell Health in Grand Rapids, known as the Corwell Health MSU Alliance Corporation, that has resulted in more investment by MSU and Corwell Health. Notably, Dr. Beauchamp spearheaded the university's thirty-year partnership with Henry Ford Health, including planning a $335 million research facility and ensuring a successful collaboration with our partners in Detroit. During some of our most challenging times, such as the COVID-19 pandemic, Dr. Beauchamp co-led MSU's response efforts, bringing together a collection, a collective from across campus to ensure the safety of our community. Under his leadership, sustainable health pillar of our MSU 2030 Strategic Plan, Dr. Beauchamp spearheaded more than a dozen cross-campus projects, including the creation of fifteen new career pathways to meet the demand for providers. The Michigan State University Board of Trustees extends its heartfelt gratitude to Dr. Norman Beauchamp for his exceptional service to his alma mater and wishes him continued success in the next part of his professional journey. There's seven more pages of successes, buddy.
Dr. Beauchamp, would you like to take the mic for a second?
Yeah, thank you. I can't even capture how meaningful that is to think. Well, we're recognized by an institution that, you know, I would feel fortunate to attend as an undergraduate student. And it was so enabling for me to realize, you know, my life goes on lessons, shows and others, but this really means a lot, and I really appreciate it. If I can reflect for a moment, I made a commitment to my mom, a community health worker, and like, still to be the responsible to bring health and hope and, you know, to all people. Now, one day I come back and seek to give back, to make a difference for our college, change my life and the institution in this state, and so much for you and my family. Having left Michigan in 1991, I felt really blessed to be welcomed back in 2016. Because of the community partners that we learned from and work with, the great, the great support of the Board, we have worked side by side to accomplish a great deal, working with the MSU presidents who have served during my time, so many incredible colleagues campus-wide, and my amazing dedicated Health Sciences family. I do believe you made a difference there. It's been eight years, eight very transformative years. I just want to thank you for all of that. I'll go forward with lessons learned from my time as a student and now as a faculty contributor, and I'm just relieved to say that the future of fellowship, the people there, the mission, the need, it's all aligned. If I can, I believe with the quote, it's meaningful to be, darkness cannot drive out death from the light. Do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And I just say, well, love to each other, at least for the important mission. Headless MSU and go green.
Very light. Dr. Beauchamp, thank you so much. I just want to say that your legacy is a, going to be a very good one, whether it's in Grand Rapids, East Lansing, Detroit, or here in Flint, which you had a big part of. We are grateful, and I want to thank you personally for all that you've done for me in helping these first hundred and twenty days to be a great success, so I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments from other trustees.
So thanks to, uh, comments from other trustees, starting with Vice Chair Tebe.
Uh, I just first want to thank all of the MSU staff that traveled from East Lansing to put on the meeting here. Appreciate all of the work that you've done, especially Jackie, for everything that you've done for the board to plan, uh, for this. Our IT staff have been phenomenal, our MSU PD, thank you so much for coming up here. I just really appreciate all the work that goes into this. I've seen you moving around a lot over the last three days, and I just really appreciate all the work that you've put in, uh, to make this meeting successful. Um, I also want to thank all of the community members from Flint that we were able to interact with over the last couple of days, and I think some of my colleagues had said it previously, but there's something about the program here in Flint, it just feels different, it feels special, and I think, you know, it's attributed to all of you and the work that you do. Um, you know, we've visited a lot of different places across our footprint over MSU, and there is just something about the program here in Flint that just, it just hits a different way, and it's really impressive, the work that you're doing, and I just commend all of you, uh, for the work that you continue to do for MSU. I also wanted to thank Norm Beauchamp for everything that he's done. I'm gonna get emotional like I usually do, but Norm is the epitome of what it means to be a Spartan, and he will be really missed here at MSU. And I'm so thankful for the friendship that he has provided for me as a trustee over the last few years, and I look forward to visiting him in DC, but just thank you, Norm, for everything that you've done for this institution, and your impact is going to live on for many, many years to come. So thank you for everything that you've done for MSU. Okay, back to the business at hand. Um, I also want to acknowledge our, um, Director of the MSU Museum. He, Devin Ackman is, has been appointed to the, uh, American Alliance of Museum Board as Vice Chair and Secretary, which is really impressive, um, across the museum community. So I wanted to acknowledge Devin, uh, here today for that. Um, I also, President Guswitz mentioned it in his remarks, but I want to sort of to give individual shout-outs to our really tremendous athletes that we have participating in the U.S. Olympic Trials. I think it's quite impressive to have such an amazing group of, um, Spartans, uh, representing us in, now in the United States stage. So I want to congratulate again Heath Baldwin, who will be representing us and the whole country at the Paris Olympics with the decathlon. He also was first in the competition for the U.S. Trials, which is really impressive and amazing. I want to, uh, acknowledge Tori Franklin, who earned the bronze in the triple jump at the track and field trials. Morgan Bealston finished fourth in his heat to reach the five thousand meter finals, which will be happening on Sunday at seven-thirty, so make sure to tune in to Rudon Morgan. We also had Katie Stewart Barnett, who finished fifth in the three thousand meter steeplechase in the Canadian Olympic Trials, so she's represented us over in Canada. And then we also had Ryan Helbert compete in the decathlon, and Trevor Stevenson compete in the pole vault in the track and field in the U.S. Olympic Trials. So we're so proud of all of them for representing us, and that concludes my report. Or my comments.
Thank you. I want to also do my best wishes to Dr. Norm Beauchamp and thank him for his service. I echo, um, the comments by both our Chair Dan Kelly and Vice Chair Kelly Tebe on our time here in Flint. And what I take away from Flint, uh, in the last three days here is really a sense of community and how Michigan State University is working alongside in partnership. I benefited greatly from the interactions. The poverty simulation was very eye-opening. I happened to be in my little group. I was the mother, the breadwinner, but we were a family that had money, but yet ended up being evicted from our home just because of a series of, of barriers and circumstances. So that was very eye-opening for the entire experience for the tabletop exercise simulation. And then also, I enjoyed when we came together and we had a chance to talk with those individuals and community members involved in all the different programming within the public health space at the, at the program here in Flint. And we talked about the RX Prescription Program and how members in public health are advocates for their community and getting involved in the political process and advocating for where their passions are and where their research is at. So I took away all of that as just a very strong partnership with Michigan State. I also want to acknowledge how important the CS Moth community is to this community here in Flint and Genesee County, and they were our hosts for our first day for our, our board work session, so I want to thank them for that. And President Guswitz, you just finished a hundred and twenty days, I think it was fifty-two stops. Uh, I had the privilege of joining you when you were with the Lansing Economic Club and for your speech there, and you were very well-received. People are very excited, both in the Greater Lansing community, but also across campus and those listening and learning sessions. I really come away with it that you are listening and that you will be engaging in a very positive way for them, so I think that's, that's all great news for us. And stability, because when we were doing the search, that's the one thing that we heard across campus, is people really want some stability. They want to be able to take a deep breath and then focus on the future, because the future really is very bright at Michigan State, and we saw a glimpse of that with our three days here in Flint. And then Jack, I've been the faculty liaison for the last, I don't know, seven or eight months, and Dan Kelly graciously, um, turned it over. But I've enjoyed working with the Faculty Senate, uh, and I've enjoyed working with you, Dr. Lipton, and I know you're gonna stay on as Vice Chair, and I'll be on for a few more months. My, I think I have three more board meetings before I am leaving the board and not running for reelection, so I'll be around for a little bit more. So with that, I want to acknowledge some faculty accolades, because I, I do think it's important to raise up our faculty and celebrate their achievements. So I want to give congratulations to seven MSU researchers who have been elected as 2023 Fellows of the American Association for the Advancement of Science, including Kristina Chan, Sean Grossman, Kevin Elliott, Catherine Hunt, Julie Labarkan, Sheryl Sisak, and William Taylor. Congratulations to Rodney Whitaker, which this board's very familiar with his musical talents, who was elected to the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, to Melanie Cooper, who was elected to the National Academy of Education, to Tom Dietz, who was elected to the National Academy of Sciences, to, um, Zhukao Chow, who received the National Science Foundation Career Award. These are all extraordinary accomplishments and reflect the university's continued leadership in research and innovation. And finally, I want to give staff accolades and a, a shout-out to the outstanding staff who received this year's Galazo Clerical Technical Award, the Jack Breslin Distinguished Staff Awards, the Ruth Jamison Above and Beyond Award, and the MSU Service Award in recipients and retirees. So congratulations to all of these very deserving Spartans, faculty, and staff, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Martin. Trustee Denno.
Thank you. Um, I'm great. I first want to thank Lisa Price. Um, I know when we get presentations, um, especially obviously ones that deal with the budget of different departments and units, that you, you are the one behind that, and, um, I think you're doing a great job, and I don't thank you enough for your hard work. I want to, uh, thank my very good friend, Dr. Norm Beauchamp, or Dr. Norm as I call him. Um, you've not only been a leader, um, here at MSU, um, you've also been a very, very good friend, and you've really helped me navigate, um, this university, and I'm really gonna miss that friendship. Raina and I are gonna miss, um, hanging out with you and Christina, and, um, every time, uh, we walk past the Frankenstein House, we'll think of you. And, um, finally, um, with the murder of, uh, another sheriff deputy yesterday in Hillsdale and the funeral today for an open county sheriff's deputy who was murdered on the line of duty, both of them murdered in the line of duty, I wanted to, um, express my heartfelt thanks to law enforcement, uh, both in this room and all over the stage for all you do, um, to keep our community safe. Uh, it's something I could never do, and I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Denno. Trustee Canady Jefferson indicated she, uh, didn't have, uh, comments for this morning, so, uh, next up is Trustee Pierce.
Let me just say that, um, adding to what all of the trustees have said, that Flint should be a role model for how we work with the community and not separate from the community to accomplish things that we think are impossible and make them possible. Secondly, I also want to say, um, Norm, I'm gonna miss you very, very much. You've, um, we've known each other for quite a while, even before I was on the board, and, uh, I congratulate you on your next adventure, but we certainly will miss your impact on, at MSU. And then, um, Kevin Guswitz, welcome. Glad you're here and can't wait to see the next hundred years. So let me, let me just talk about some rankings very quickly, because I think we don't talk about how well-perceived Michigan State is in so many areas across this country and across the globe. So we are number three in the country and number twenty-five in the world for sustainability by the prestigious Times Higher Education, and we're the only university in Michigan and in the Big Ten in the top twenty-five. We rank in the top fifty among U.S. Patent Granting, Patent Granting Universities by the National Academy of Inventors and the top hundred worldwide, and we are in the top ten prominent colleges and universities producing the most Peace Corps volunteers. That's pretty good accolades for a well-deserved university. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Scott.
I will echo the comments of my colleagues concerning how wonderful this retreat has been. I, Dan, you've set the bar for retreats. Maybe you didn't even do anything.
I didn't.
This is the, this is the best board retreat that I have been a part of by far. There is no question. So I want to thank Stefan, I know that you put a lot into this, Jackie, um, everyone that was involved in the logistics of this board retreat and making sure that we've got a really good representation of what is happening in this community, which is just extraordinary. So thank you all for your hard work with that. Um, I think Mike Zieg probably had a lot to do with that as well. And speaking of the, the board retreat, I just have to give a shout-out, Dean Susa. I said this to you last night, and I will say it again publicly, you're amazing. You are doing a phenomenal job, and everyone that works with you, all of you, our faculty staff that work here, all of our community volunteers, thank you all so much for what you are doing in this community. You have really changed the game for other, um, communities to look at what you've done. You are an example of what is possible, and I look forward to the replication at least over in Muskegon, hopefully, um, in the coming years of what you've done here. Um, I also want to just thank everyone that made this happen. Um, I think Kelly or Trustee Tebe gave the shout-out, um, of the, the MSU PD and all of the others that have been really integral in making sure that this could happen. So thank you all. You are sometimes the unsung heroes to everything that we do. I thank all of our faculty and our EVPs who are amazing, um, that shared with us and brought us up to speed on all of the great things we're doing and the challenges that we have to overcome in the coming future. So I, I just thank you all for the time and efforts that you put into making this, um, a board retreat where we learned, and, um, I think as a university, we are in a good position to, um, do really well in the future. I also wanted to, um, give a quick shout-out to Kevin, who is the hopeful optimist. I, I appreciate the energy that you bring. When you walk into a room, um, to me, you, all, all eyes are on you, but you just work a room in such a wonderful way. I love to see, um, the way that you engage with people, even those that you don't know that feel like they know you by the time they've had a conversation with you. Um, you're very warm, maybe to the touch, but I'm talking about your personality. And I just appreciate, um, the energy that you brought. Um, I know that everything that I have heard has been positive about, um, the, the engagement that you've had with our MSU community and our donor community, as well as the communities at large, and so I thank you. I look forward to continuing to work with you and support you, um, and I know we are in good hands. I'd also like to just talk briefly about the, um, opening of the Tom Izzo Football Building, which was just incredible. I have, um, pictures of some of the trustees and the seats in the football building. It was just amazing just to see, um, the incredible facilities that we now have that I think would rival any program in this country. Um, I thank you to all of the donors, um, that put in their money and those that put in time and making this facility what it is. It was an incredible night to, I think, a very deserving coach that we have here at MSU, and I think we are all extremely grateful for all that he's given to our university. So congratulations on that. If you have not visited, you need to go see it because it's incredible. Um, I also, for the first time ever, had the opportunity to attend the NAACP Annual Freedom Fund Dinner in Detroit. I'd never had that opportunity to attend that, and boy, have I missed out. Um, it was an incredible evening. We got to hear from President Biden and other leaders throughout the state of Michigan. Um, the money goes to scholarships and other programming. We got to see some of the, the children that, and the youth that have benefited from, um, the scholarship funds, and I just really enjoyed myself. So thank you, MSU, for, um, encouraging me to attend, and I did not have the opportunity but heard so much about the Juneteenth, um, celebration at MSU, so kudos to everyone that was able to participate. It is certainly something that I feel, um, is worthy of celebration. I understand we had a lot of great speakers, um, and everyone had a wonderful time, but the cause is something that is extremely important. And I think that it is important for us to all celebrate Juneteenth, not, um, just as something, um, for Black Americans to celebrate, but I think all of us need to look at it as like a Memorial Day or Fourth of July. We have given so much to this country, and to celebrate our freedoms, I think, is something we all should celebrate. So I encourage those of you that have not to participate next year when you get the opportunity. I want to give a shout-out, um, to Norm Beauchamp, and I don't know, maybe he jumped off, but being the only trustee that lives in West Michigan, um, for me, the enormity of what Norm has been able to do in Grand Rapids, Michigan, is something I just can't put into words. The sense of pride that I had every time that I went there to see all of the various MSU signs and all of the buildings we have there, and just to hear the incredible work, um, to really bring us, um, into the forefront in that area, that was spearheaded really by you, Norm, and we can't thank you enough. You have always been someone that has shown compassion in everything that you've done, and it's not even just for human, um, services and, and medical for, for humans. He cares about people's dogs, because when my dog was dying, it was Norm that reached out to me to try to see what he could do with the veterinarian clinic to help my dog to survive, and she didn't survive. But I thank you because you have just always shown compassion. Um, what you have done in Detroit, I know we had the ability, I think it was last year, to do the tour. It was phenomenal. We thank you for your leadership. We're going to miss you. I think I told you that at commencement, um, when we did our selfie. I'm sad to see you go, um, but I know you're gonna do some extraordinary things, so congratulations to you, and hopefully you will stay in touch with us. Um, I also wanted to just briefly, um, thank Dr. Lipton, who, um, has just done, uh, a yeoman's job, I believe, in your role. We are, I think, gonna benefit from you being Vice here. Maybe we won't hear from you as much, but I'm glad that we're gonna be able to continue to work with you. Um, I appreciate all that you have brought to the forefront on things that we do need to work on as a board, um, and we have taken some of those things into account with, um, a lot of the changes that we've made. So I, I thank you for being willing to put yourself out there on behalf of the faculty, um, to represent what is in the best interest of the university, and thank you for your bravery with that. Um, I'd also like to, oh, I meant to talk about the simulation. So I was the grandma, and I was married to Kevin. He was my, my husband. We had one bad child, which, um, was Stefan, and one other child that didn't do what she was supposed to do, which was Kelly. But anyway, this simulation. We were family, right, um, yesterday, but my God, I, I told them when we first sat down, I was triggered by the simulation, because, and I don't want to go into my story, but I think we all know, if it hasn't been us, personally, we know of people who have dealt with poverty and who have had to go through, um, all of the various things that we had in the simulation, from being on food stamps to not having transportation, to not having good healthcare, and not being able to afford your rent. I got evicted yesterday. Those things really happen, and to be able to really put ourselves in that place of others, sometimes we forget from whence we came, um, and what the plight of others are, and sometimes we take for granted how much we have, and it really brought me back to that moment, and so I thank you for all of those that put that on for us yesterday. That, Dan's looking at me, I know, I'm almost done.
No, no problem.
It was, it was an incredible, um, It was, it was an incredible, I think, lesson for us to be empathetic and to understand that we all don't start at the same start sign or stop, start line, whatever you want to call it, in life, and to appreciate what we do have. And I just, again, applaud everyone that put that on and the work that you all are doing, again, to bring these things to reality, so that when our medical students work with people from different parts of life, from different demographics or economic places in, in the economy, that we can be sensitive of what each person is bringing to the table and be more understanding. So thank you for that. Last, I wanted to talk about the Miracle Initiative, but I'm going to not talk about that because I feel like I've been talking too long. But if you don't know what it is, you guys need to look it up. It is an incredible program. So thank you, everyone, and that's it. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Scott. Trustee Bassett.
So everyone has praised this retreat, and I want to thank everyone who made it happen. Flint has been super fantastic. The Flintstones have been fantastically fabulous. This is a vibrant community with resilience, brilliance, and beauty, and I've been moved and inspired the whole time we've been here. I do know that our presence here would not be possible without the efforts of Norm Beauchamp, who is leaving, well, left, I think he had his, a picture with his U-Haul the other day. He was, I think, zooming in from his U-Haul. So I just want to thank Norm for being a thought leader, but also a good person, and I just, I'll, I'll miss him. But I also want to thank Dean Sousa, who's, this work is amazing, and I know that you, you sleep and breathe this work, and so I just appreciate your passion for it. Amber Pearson with Stand, that work was just phenomenal. I don't know if you all went to all the stations, but I was able to catch some of the stations yesterday, and she's doing work. She let me know that birds are, the birds chirping are a sign of safety. I did not know that. I had been cursing them at five o'clock in the morning, like, these birds! But she said, actually, you should feel safer because when birds are chirping, that means that there's no danger. So I, I'm going to do better about the birds. And then the Flint Public Health Youth Academy, I don't, there, we talk about pathways all the time into health sciences, and this is a real pathway. Like, they are taking youth from elementary school into our university. And Everett's work with the Flint Public Health Youth Academy, racism as a public health crisis, youth and gun violence, these folks are all over the place making policy changes, and they're an inspiration. But it's also, again, a sign of what can happen when you partner with K-12 spaces to make our university more diverse and enriched with diverse thoughts and talents. And I just appreciate, again, the community-based and participatory research that's going on here. We keep saying that we would like to replicate it in different places. I would say that that is a framework that should be used everywhere, and I'm so looking forward to seeing that framework that we witnessed actually happening for the first time ever that I've seen in Flint, practiced in Detroit with our Henry Ford and Health Systems Partnership. I attended that groundbreaking event alongside Vice Chair T Bay and Chair Kelly and trustee Byram and trustee Pierce, and it was just gratifying and satisfying to see, after serving three years on that steering board, as a, as an MSU representative, to see that work come to fruition and to drive literally 14 minutes from my home. It was awesome. I'm just really excited about MSU's continued commitment to Detroit. Athena McKay, you all saw her, her innovative app to assist in pregnancy health. Dr. Mona and Dr. Jones worked with the Flint Registry unmatched. Mr. Jefferson was one of the people who helped with the simulation, and he drives a, a ice cream truck here in Flint, and he said that he can, he can sell snow cones in, in winter. And so obviously, he can sell anything. There's snow on the ground, and he's still selling snow cones, and we're hoping that he'll take up the MSU gear and, and sell that on his truck. It was just a treat to meet all these folks. We're doing transformational work alongside, in collaboration, in community with the Flint folks, and I'm just excited about that. I did want to commend President Guskowitz, 100 years, 100 days, I'm not sure, but you said that, you know, you learned this word about tired and that buildings are tired, and you don't look tired, but, I mean, you, I don't know how you do it. Like, I saw him at 11:30 at night, he was going up to his room, and then he was out running at like 5:00 a.m., sir, slow down, rest. I don't know how you're doing all this, but you have gotten around and listened to so many people, and they come back and tell us, right? And so I just appreciate your willingness to sit before your community and learn what their needs are so that you can lead them in the ways that they need and not necessarily in the ways that you would like. Again, you can't replicate, you can only build relationships, and so I just appreciate you doing that work so much, more than I could articulate. And I did also attend the NAACP Dinner. I've attended for the last six years. Reverend Wendell Anthony is the head of the largest NAACP chapter in the United States. He's also my pastor. He married both Misses and, and me, and he christened our children. So I go to that every year, and MSU, since Stefan has been the, the Board Secretary, finally had a presence there. So I appreciate you and Dr. Zai for making that happen, for us being a sponsor in the largest dinner ever sponsored in the United States. It's the NAACP Dinner, and MSU wasn't there. So for the last two years, we've been there, and I just appreciate you all. And I appreciate the, the MSU NAACP coming and showing up and, and fellowshipping with the folks that are the, the larger NAACP body. So I just, I had a great time, it was great to see the students and the fellowship with them and MSU leaders. I, I don't know how Rudless, Rudless is almost as energetic as you, because she just comes to everything, too. So she was at the NAACP Dinner, and I just appreciate that. Happy Pride Month. This has been, there's been so many activities, particularly in Detroit, but in Lansing as well. And so I'm hoping that you were able to, in the last couple of days, if we have Pride Month, get to some of those, and be in solidarity with folks who are doing great work in the state around equality and equity. And then happy Juneteenth. Good job, Dr. Bennett, this, I think it's the fourth year, and it was, it gets bigger and better and, and batter every time, and I've, I've been impressed with his work in celebrating the emancipation of enslaved Black people in this country. Two more items. Proud of the work MSU is doing in Detroit. So Henry Ford Health System, thank you, Chair Kelly, for taking up that work. Please, please, please hold it dear and near to your heart because we, that work is transformational and will address health equities, inequities, and disparities. I don't know if you met, you did meet with the MSU Apple developer last night, who was at the retreat. Yes. They, that place, if you haven't visited, she, she did come and give, thank you. Thank you for having her come, but we, we just, that MSU Apple Academy is phenomenal, and people should go out to see the work that they're doing. A special shout out to the distinguished winner of the Swift Student Challenge, Desmond Blair, who created an app that takes users on a virtual mountain bike rider demonstration. So expressive coding and creativity that's happening in that space. And lastly, I perhaps naively ran for this position with the hope of making policy change for equity and justice. At the time of my campaign, George Floyd had been murdered, Breonna Taylor and Ramad Awry were killed in their homes while jogging, respectively. And people were committed to justice and equity and change in that moment. Since then, we've seen, right, that change is hard, and there's been a, a pushback on DEI efforts across the nation. Again, I appreciate President Guskowitz, you saying that you're committed to DEI. There's been a quiet quitting around DEI, even in Michigan, and so I'm just really, I do understand that change is hard, but it is also necessary for progress. I have always considered students my largest constituency. I remain steadfastly committed to my role in facilitating change, and I'm equally devoted to students, their success, and their activism. Without student struggle and engaging in civil disobedience, I would not be sitting here today in this seat, just would not happen. Snake, I think Dr. Norm Beauchamp always quotes Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that change happened with him and students. Topeka versus the Board of Education, all of that happened with students. And so young folks are our leaders, they're the bravest among us, they're smart, and they're necessary for our collective advancement.
Thank you, trustee Bassett. President, I'll turn it over to you to turn it back to me, I guess, for public participation on that. Well, thank you very much. It was a boomerang, good segue there. So we'll now proceed to public participation on other items not germane to the agenda. Each individual who signed up to speak will have three minutes to address the board. Your time will end when the buzzer sounds. Given the number of speakers today, we ask that you do not exceed the allotted time. Know the person scheduled to speak may not cede all or part of their time to other individuals or read statements on their behalf. We will now hear from Jeremy Jubenville, followed by Victor Rodriguez Pereira. Jeremy, are you, are you with us?
Good morning.
Jeremy.
Good morning. Is it still morning yet?
It is.
Perfect. Okay. My name is Jeremy Jubenville. I am a floriculture agent with Michigan State University Extension. As you know, MSU Extension is an organization with over 400 frontline workers, and we fulfill a critical part of a land-grant mission. We have field staff in all 83 counties, and we are fully integrated in the communities that we serve. In my job, I work primarily with commercial flower growers across seven counties in southwest Michigan. It's an amazing job, right? And I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be able to give back to the community. I know how, you know how I feel that, and it's, it's, they've given me so much, so I feel very blessed for that. Today, however, I am wearing a different hat. So today, I am representing hundreds of people who want to form a labor union of extension workers at Michigan State University. We are working towards regular cost of living adjustments, objective criteria for evaluations, a legitimate grievance process, and a, a compensation structure that, that honors the, the knowledge, the experience, and the years of service of our members. These are reasonable expectations. These are also chronic issues that have been problems for decades. So I am pleased to report that a majority of extension workers have signed up to form a union here, following the criteria laid out by this Board of Trustees in their December 2021 Resolution on Collective Bargaining. However, we asked for a card check last November, and Human Resources has been obstructing the process ever since. One example, they now want to impose time limits on when people signed up to join the union. Folks, it hasn't even been two years. The people still work here, they still want our union, and HR is trying to tell them that their votes don't count, and that's not right, right? And more to the point, they're ignoring your guidance, and they are obstructing our right to collectively bargain. It's been seven months since we asked for a card check, we still have a majority, we just need HR to stop playing games. So that's all I have for you today. I know you're busy people, we just wanted the opportunity to introduce ourselves and to make you aware that there's a situation brewing. I plan to stick around for a few minutes after the meeting, so if you have additional questions or would like to discuss this further, I would be very happy to have that conversation. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Victor Rodriguez Pereira, followed by Missy Chola. Victor, good morning.
Morning, everyone. Thank you. My name is Victor Rodriguez Pereira. I teach Spanish, Languages and Literatures at Michigan State University. One of my students is back here, actually, she can vouch for me. But today, I am speaking to you in my capacity of president of the Union of Non-Tenure Track Faculty at Michigan State. On December 21, 2021, this board passed a resolution recognizing the fundamental rights of its employees to organize and unionize. Your resolution also resolved that the university shall remain neutral on the issue of representation and organizing, and that the university would recognize new unions via a card check. Our members were incredibly thankful for your support. It was a huge step in the right direction to support those who lack a voice on campus. One such group, of whom you heard a moment ago, is the MSU Extension Program, where folks came together from across the state and recently completed their card check as stipulated by your resolution. Unfortunately, MSU Human Resources has consistently ignored both the letter and the spirit of your resolution, undermining the good intentions of this board. Despite extension workers spending the last year or so organizing along the lines laid out by your resolution and labor laws, despite our efforts of working together with administrators to find a solution that's fair, the offices of Employee Relations and Faculty and Academic Staff Affairs refused to recognize the extension faculty, the extension union, employing obstructionist approaches eerily similar to the Amazons and the Starbucks of the world in their attempts to break their fledging unions. Our tenure colleagues, actually, some of whom are here as well, have also had to face similar challenges. Now, I understand that the role of this body and U.S. trustees is not to micromanage the university operations, but I have a duty to inform you that when your resolutions are blatantly being ignored, especially ones that have a direct effect in our community. So today, I am here to ask you for a favor. Don't let local managers be an obstacle to justice. Talk to central administration and ask them to please rein in rogue departments on doing your good work. Please ask them to recognize the collective will of your workers. We are an educational institution. MSU works because we do. It is fair, it is just, it is time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Missy Chola, appearing via Zoom, and then Jennifer Getz. Missy, can you hear me? We can. Good morning, Missy.
Good morning, everybody. I'm here today to address three issues. Juneteenth, internal conference with our leadership in the board, and a kind of participation with the word "trustee" in it. As I speak of, I can think carefully about why the biggest factor of this is Black citizens. I'll start with Juneteenth, a day named for celebration. Juneteenth represents liberation of all African-Americans and Stans as a powerful reminder of the inherent human spirit in the face of unimaginable slavery and oppression. It celebrates freedom, equity, triumphs, and struggles for Black Americans who are tired, who have no rights, who are bullied, and who are beaten. Yet, at MSU, Juneteenth is not recognized as a federal holiday. Employees are required to work without receiving an hourly housing incentive, unlike other federal holidays such as Memorial Day, Labor Day, Christmas, and New Year's, and Fourth of July. Being that Juneteenth is a main holiday devoted to the independence of Black people, it should not be a question of whether employees get paid more. Shouldn't a holiday dedicated to the freedom of the entire Black community be held in the same regard? It is unsettling and disturbing, seeing that Michigan State University once again does not recognize or respect the values of Black history. This is on the first side, a lack of respect has been shown, and we have seen this throughout the years that Juneteenth is fighting. And Michigan State University truly can't complain to protect the wealthy of its own people when it fails to honor such a significant day. MSU must fully recognize Juneteenth as a federal holiday, ensure equal treatment, and this includes implementing an hourly housing incentive for employees and students. Point number two, I just wanted to highlight that you maybe really do not notice the tactics that the Board of Trustees have used to publicly lynch Dr. Bill Russell. It's disappointing, it's disappointing to see the administration turning a blind back to board members who are publicly broken in federal laws while flagrant, behind the law, consistently supporting Black students. This doesn't stand at least a stop. Dr. Bassett continues to be a strong advocate for our rights and dignity, and instead of supporting her, it is very clear that she can do whatever it takes to destroy her. This shows that the university cares more about protecting its image rather than addressing racism and discrimination. And it also highlights a very clear discerning pattern and a tactic that should be taken out of the White House book, which is publicly undermining Black Americans and manipulating another Black woman to legitimizing this scam. But let me make this clear, the error of the White House succeeding and destroying Black people is long gone. Dr. Bassett has consistently supported students in ways I have never seen from any of you, particularly in support of Black students. Just this month, she recognized and awarded scholarships to students from all of Michigan who are active.
This fund, as of January 2024, has holdings in 36 Israeli companies that are part of Israel's occupation and apartheid system, where they all become companies that produce goods or provide services in illegal settlements in occupied Palestinian territories. These settlements are illegal under the Fourth Geneva Convention, the Hague Regulation, and the Rome Statute of the International Human Court. The Biden administration recognizes the settlements as transittment under international law. Six of the 36 companies support Israel's apartheid law and the checkpoints that entrapped a lot of Palestinians living in occupied territories. This law is also illegal. The International Court of Justice ruled in 2004 that Israel must dismantle it. The worst of the companies is Albert Systems, Israel's largest defense contractor. Albert may capture military aircraft, drones, munitions, vehicles, and surveillance systems marketed global mass, quote-unquote, battle-tested. Also acquired parts of Al-Wal. They are tested on Palestinians living in occupied territories. This law is also illegal. The International Court of Justice ruled in 2004 that Israel must dismantle it. The worst of the companies is Albert Systems, Israel's largest defense contractor. Albert may capture military aircraft, drones, munitions, vehicles, and surveillance systems marketed global mass, quote-unquote, battle-tested. Also acquired parts of Al-Wal. They are tested on Palestinians living in occupied territories. Albert is deeply implicated in the Gaza genocide. We have heard about Biden's suspended shipment, 2,000 BOMs to, outbombs to Israel. Albert makes just as powerful bombs, NPR 500s, which are used in densely populated Gaza. Israel also uses Albert's attack drones to kill Palestinians. Several minorities were widely killed by Albert drones, as were 7,000 war central TCHA quarters. They end and they out. Palestinians live amidst a deadly bust of Albert drones, and next in town, there is a steam-induced air central air system. Albert manufactures components for the Nakaba tanks that fired on the 112,000 Palestinians killed and 760 injured during the February 29th Flower Massacre. The tanks then ran over the dead and wounded, crushing their bodies under their treads. Nakaba tanks fired on six-year-old Tim Rusher and the Palestinian parabets who went to rescue them, as she sat for hours terrified in the cars of 120 white troops. The knowledge that MSU has been testing such a murdering aircraft must be painful for Spartans to hear. These machos are to populate my thoughts, as just acknowledged, that mining toward the carters from them. Trustees die dust from the genocide now.
Thank you, Waseem. Our next speaker is Alex Al-Wais, appearing via Zoom, and then Omar Mahmood. Alex, are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can indeed. Please proceed.
Good morning. I'm going to add what my colleagues have already stated and speak about MSU's investments in weapons manufacturers. MSU's 2023 cash investment disclosure shows both direct and indirect investments in defense contractors and weapons manufacturers. Direct investments reported include Fonis Holdings and Boeing, a total of over $2 million in corporate bonds, Lockheed Martin, a little under $500 million in corporate bonds, and Northrop Grumman, a little over $1.5 million in corporate bonds. These are three of the largest weapons manufacturers in the world and have been implicated in mass death and destruction around this globe, including Israel's ongoing occupation of Palestine in current genocidal campaigns in Gaza. Today, I will focus on Boeing, MSU's largest investment in this sector and the world's fifth-largest weapons manufacturer. Boeing manufactures F-15 fighter jets and Apache AH-64 attack helicopters, which the Israeli Air Force could use extensively in attacks on civilians in Gaza as well as those in Lebanon. In addition, Boeing bombs have been used in Israel's indiscriminate bombing campaigns in Gaza and are linked to multiple massacres. For example, reports show Boeing's 250-pound GPU-39 bombs were used earlier this very month in a deadly Israeli strike on US school buildings in the Yom Reh refugee camp. Boeing also manufactures joint direct attack munitions kit, which Israel has used extensively, such as in the November 1st bombing of Gaza's Javaliya refugee camp, which killed hundreds of Palestinian civilians, including running children. Attacks on refugee camps and schools constitute war crimes, which munitions designed and made by Boeing are repeatedly being used to carry out. UN experts have stated that the transfer of weapons and ammunition to Israel may constitute serious violations of human rights and international humanitarian laws and risk implicitly an international crime, including genocide. This is what MSU's investments are facilitating and demonstrate how MSU has chosen through its investments to support and profit off violent war and genocide. The depth of the horrors in Israel's ongoing genocide in Gaza haunting, and the fact that we are going to see our conflict through our investments keeps me up at night. Given the false discourses we have heard continuously over the past few months linking safety to these ongoing investments, as a Jewish member of the MSU community, I want to say clearly that investing in and facilitating and profiting off genocide does not make us any favor. The time to divest from these death-giving companies has long passed. Palestinian children's lives are not one of politics that we will regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Our next speaker is Omar Mahmood, followed by Delaney McDermott. Omar, are you with us?
Okay. Our next speaker will be Delaney McDermott, followed by William Hackbath. Delaney, are you with us? Good morning.
Hello. My name is Delaney McDermott, and I am an alumni of Michigan State University. I'm here to represent a growing group of MSU alumni from Palestine, and we urge you all to read the documents that we have submitted, including our solidarity letter that over 260 alumni have signed so far, demanding divestment from Israel and war profiteering companies, among our other demands. I want to start by saying that when I began my undergraduate career in the fall of 2017, MSU was in the midst of a PR crisis in the wake of Larry Nassar and in the mishandling and shameful cover-up of the disgusting actions by Luanna K. Simon and MSU government. In the years following, many instances of institutionalized racism, sexism, and systemic mistreatment of MSU students, faculty, and staff became exposed, and MSU became centered in the national spotlight for these disgraceful actions. MSU has been scrambling ever since to regain its reputation. This is evidenced by the fact that the president of MSU has been held by five different individuals since 2018. I urge you all to keep this in mind, as the path that is to be taken forward from this point needs to be one of trust and faith from your community. Though Palestinians and advocates for Palestine have been doing this work for decades, the most recent phase of the genocide against Palestinians has brought this cause to the attention of the world, and it has shifted public opinion to support an anti-Zionist and anti-colonialist stance. On MSU's own campus, the call for divestment from Israel and war profiteering companies has been made for years. These calls, and BDS more generally, are in large part modeled after the divestment movement from apartheid South Africa. MSU's legacy in this war is one of pride, in that it was one of the first universities to divest from South African apartheid in 1978. However, on the other side of the coin, MSU was founded for the express purpose of land appropriation of the Anishinaabe peoples. MSU also collaborated with the United States government and supported its shameful actions of colonialism in both Vietnam and Iraq. MSU and the Board of Trustees can choose either to continue funding and supporting violent armies perpetuating acts of colonialism for profit, as it did in Iraq, Vietnam, and the lands of the Anishinaabe, or it can once again listen to the many calls being made for divestment from genocidal actions and apartheid, as it did when it divested from South Africa in 1978. MSU alumni ask the trustees to regain MSU's legacy and give us a reason to be proud to be part of this community. As such, we will be withholding all donations to the university until the demands in our letter have been met. Over $83,000 has been pledged so far by our signatories to be withheld. These numbers are growing every single day, and we will ensure that if MSU and the Board of Trustees will not listen to the moral objections to investing in and normalizing ties with the apartheid state of Israel. Maybe you will listen to our dollars instead. Thank you. I bailed my time.
Our next speaker is William Hackbath, followed by Bara Al-Sadiki. Good morning, William.
Good morning. I'm also an alumni of Michigan State University. I'm also speaking on behalf of MSU alumni for Palestine. We have a website, you should check it out, lots of good information on there. We're also working with a lot of different alumni groups in Michigan. We're doing a similar thing. And you've heard a lot of moral arguments today. You've heard a lot of, I mean, I can't think of a single other argument that would convince anyone with, you know, a human moral compass to do whatever they could to stop this violence from happening. And like from the experiences Delaney just recounted, you know, I went to MSU from 2017 to 21. I thought it was going to be this progressive university who really cared about its students, you know, that was still academically renowned, but what it set itself apart from all these other institutions, what was different about it was that it cared. It cared about something. The academics weren't just taught, they were applied with values and integrity. When I got here from 2017 to 2021, nothing but scandal after scandal, corruption after corruption, and never in those four years were students listened to or faculty listened to. If at any point we had had a say in who could be replaced and how the institution might be changed, we could have helped you. You would have avoided the next scandal and the next scandal. But how many times does the same cycle have to happen for you guys to realize that this is a pattern caused by something, by human action, by sin, by greed, right? So, the point here is, I don't believe you have morals. I don't, after going to MSU, believe that this is a moral or an institution that possesses any values or integrity whatsoever. I believe it cares about one thing and one thing only, and that is money, right? So, on that note, I'm going to make a monetary argument for you, right? Like Delaney said, we have started collecting signatures from all alumni that we can contact. 260 is pretty small. University of Michigan has like thousands at this point, right? But this serves as an example, a small sample, and hopefully a warning to you guys that, yes, we don't have as much money as the people who make bombs and planes, right? And who kill people for profit. We don't have as much money as them, I'm sorry. But we do have some money, and collectively, we can choose where to spend it. People are scared to send their kids here. They're scared to go here. They are scared to teach, they don't want to teach here. They don't believe in this university and what it represents anymore. If you bring your reputation back, this is the perfect chance to do it. History is repeating itself. You were so far ahead on South Africa. The whole world knows that that was the right call now. And honestly, your reputation lasted until I was a kid. I was born in 1998. It was still seen as a progressive institution. For 2030, you were getting, if you want money, listen to us. Listen to your students.
Thank you, William. Our next speaker is Bara Al-Sadiki, followed by Thomas Smith. Bara?
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm an engineering graduate of MSU and current grad student in youth development. I've been in Flint serving middle school youth, hundreds of middle school youth for the past six years. Spartans will. But my comment today is not about this Spartan, it's about these heroes standing behind me. This family, this family became my neighbors three months ago, and I'm honored to know them, but they aren't supposed to be my neighbors here in Flint. Yusuf is supposed to be in his second year studying at AI at the Islamic University in Gaza. His little sister, Jihan, who had to step out because she got bored, should be getting ready for fourth grade. His mother, Jamida, should be still enjoying the presence of her 14-year-old daughter, Jude. Instead, on October 18, Jude was killed by a blast right outside her own home. Jihan's left arm was blown off, requiring that her fibula be taken out of her leg and grafted in place of the arm she lost. Everyone else was hit with shrapnel, Yusuf in his jaw and in his right hand, in and out. Their father is at home right now, dealing with a wound that is still open now, eight months later. Islamic University, like virtually all education in Gaza, is still non-operational. Jihan never experienced third grade. In case any minds here answer... be part of this community. As such, we will be withholding all donations to the university until the demands in our letter have been met. Over eighty-three thousand dollars has been pledged so far by our signatories to be withheld. These numbers are growing every single day, and we will ensure that if MSU and the Board of Trustees will not listen to the moral objections to investing in and normalizing ties with the apartheid state of Israel, maybe you will listen to our dollars instead. Thank you. I bailed my time.
Our next speaker is William Hackbath, followed by Bara Al-Dosoki. Good morning, William.
Good morning. I'm also an alumni of Michigan State University. I'm also speaking on behalf of MSU alumni for Palestine. We have a website, you should check it out, lots of good information on there. We're also working with a lot of different alumni groups in Michigan. We're doing similar things. And you've heard a lot of moral arguments today. You've heard a lot of, I mean, I can't think of a single other argument that would convince anyone with, you know, a human moral compass to do whatever they could to stop this violence from happening. And like from the experiences Delaney just recounted, you know, I went to MSU from 2017 to 21, I thought it was going to be this progressive university who really cared about its students, you know, that was still academically renowned, but what it set itself apart from all these other institutions, what was different about it was that it cared, it cared about something. The academics weren't just taught, they were applied with values and integrity. When I got here from 2017 to 2021, nothing but scandal after scandal, corruption after corruption, and never in those four years were students listened to or faculty listened to. If at any point we had had a say in who could be replaced and how the institution might be changed, we could have helped you. You would have avoided the next scandal and the next scandal. But how many times does the same cycle have to happen for you guys to realize that this is a pattern caused by something, by human action, by sin, by greed, right? So the point here is, I don't believe you have morals. I don't, after going to MSU, believe that this is a moral or an institution that possesses any values or integrity whatsoever. I believe it cares about one thing and one thing only, and that is money, right? So, on that note, I'm going to make a monetary argument for you, right? Like Delaney said, we have started collecting signatures from all alumni that we can contact. Two hundred and sixty is pretty small. University of Michigan has like thousands at this point, right? But this serves as an example, a small sample, and hopefully a warning to you guys that, yes, we don't have as much money as the people who make bombs and planes, right, and who kill people for profit. We don't have as much money as them, I'm sorry. But we do have some money, and collectively, we can choose where to spend it. People are scared to send their kids here. They're scared to go here. They are scared to teach, they don't want to teach here. They don't believe in this university and what it represents anymore. If you bring your reputation back, this is the perfect chance to do it. History is repeating itself. You were so far ahead on South Africa. The whole world knows that that was the right call now. And honestly, your reputation lasted until I was a kid. I was born in 1998. It was still seen as a progressive institution. For 2030, you were getting, if you want money, listen to us, listen to your students.
Thank you, William. Our next speaker is Bara Al-Sodoki, followed by Thomas Smith.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm an engineering graduate of MSU and current grad student in youth development. I've been in Flint serving middle school youth, hundreds of middle school youths for the past six years, Spartans willing. But my comments today is not about this Spartan, it's about these heroes standing behind me. This family, this family became my neighbors three months ago, and I'm honored to know them, but they aren't supposed to be my neighbors here in Flint. Yusuf is supposed to be in his second year studying at AI at the Islamic University in Gaza. His little sister Jihan, who had to step out because she got bored, should be getting ready for fourth grade. His mother Jamida should be still enjoying the presence of her fourteen-year-old daughter Jude. Instead, on October eighteenth, Jude was killed by a blast right outside her own home. Jihan's left arm was blown off, requiring that her fibula be taken out of her leg and grafted in place of the arm she lost. Everyone else was hit with shrapnel, Yusuf in his jaw and in his right hand, in and out. Their father is at home right now, dealing with a wound that is still open now, eight months later. Islamic University, like virtually all education in Gaza, is still non-operational. Jihan never experienced third grade. In case any minds here entertain the thought that they must have been guilty of something, listen to this. Five days before the blast, they left their homes as they had been asked to. They found their way to the Rafah border to leave Gaza with permission from the relevant Israeli powers. Finding the border closed by said powers, they ventured back home. They didn't receive a warning call before the bomb fell at their front door. You tell me what their crime is, if you can find one, because I can't. And while it's popular to say how many thousand Yusuf's never made it out of the rubble, how many thousand Jihans are spending their days crying at their parents' graves instead of at school, and how many thousand Jamiras have hearts that have not healed from carrying their dismembered bodies, childrens, in their own hands? It's popular to give those numbers, but I don't have numbers for you today. Instead, I have, instead, I have these innocent heroes. I have these innocent heroes. Because if anyone would so much as suggest that just this one family should be harmed in the least for no crime that they committed, that alone should be enough for all of us to stop everything we're doing, table all agenda items, and come to their protection. As much as I'm here for Yusuf and his family, I'm also here as a protector of MSU and what it's supposed to stand for. Because what I described about atrocities is done by the intentional design of the Zionist entity being supported and enabled by levels from the White House all the way down to, unfortunately, the administrative offices of universities. The White House and Congress have succumbed to being well-tamed apologists and financiers of everything that the racist entity of Israel does. Those halls in Washington have proven to be hollow of basic humanity and morality. By no means, by no means should this room and the people in this board succumb to the same monstrous fate in history. As I look forward to the conversations that must ensue between the administration, board, students, faculty, and alumni, I'm not concerned much about where MSU will stand in history because clearly Spartans are willing. My question, respected President, Board members, and trustees is, are you?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Smith, followed by Naseem Saeed. Thomas, are you with us?
When I applied to speak here, I was told that somebody would give me a text. I haven't heard from anybody until just this minute, so I don't have anything prepared. But I do want to say, if you're taking money from Boeing or any of the other war machines, it needs to quit. You quit now. God is watching.
Before I start my speech, I'd like to call the Board of Trustees out for using their phones while listening to other speeches today. I think that's completely unprofessional. Your job here right now is to listen and not to be distracted on your phones. So, dear Board of Trustees, there are no more tears to shed, and there are no more words in the dictionary to use. Your impatiently echoes the crisis of the oppressed, the marginalized, and the tyrannized. The blood-soaked streets of Gaza demand justice, and the world can no longer turn a blind eye on the horrors inflicted upon its innocent civilians. It's now been eight months, eight months of innocent lives being extinguished, families being torn apart, and futures being ripped from the innocent children's hands. And yet, we stand here unable to take the decisive action in the face of such atrocity. We have seen the images, the videos that burn into our souls like hot iron, babies torn limb from limb, mothers wailing on, mothers wailing over their lifeless babies and their loved children, and the unspeakable horrors inflicted upon the innocent by this apartheid and oppressive government. Enough is enough. We cannot stand lazily by the force of oppression trampled upon the dignity and humanity of the innocent people of Gaza. Divestment is not merely a suggestion, it's a moral imperative, an ethical stance, a call to arm against the face of tyranny and injustice. If the genocide in Gaza was transparent elsewhere on a different group of people, the reaction would be, would exhibit a totally different dynamic. However, the ethnicity and the color of one's skin should never dictate the value of their life. The people of Gaza bleed the same gruesome blood as any human being on this globe, and their cries for justice must be heard. Michigan State University has a history by taking a stance as evidence of divestment during the apartheid era in South Africa. Gaza should not be any different. What's the difference in your opinion? Is it because there's terrorists in Gaza? Well, let me tell you, Nelson Mandela was labeled terrorist at one point in time. We shall not wait for T-shirts or national holidays in order to take a stand with the truth. The people of Gaza deserve equal treatment as anyone in this world. They do not deserve to be oppressed, their lives shattered, or their dreams extinguished. Through simple actions like divestment, we can strip the oppressor of their power and hold them accountable for their violent actions against humanity. We can march forward with unwavering determination fueled by the fire of justice and guided by the light of pure compassion until the day dawns when the humans in Gaza can live the way that any human on this planet lives. Today, I ask for divestment, excuse me, we ask for divestment. Tomorrow, we will ask for divestment. The day after, we will ask for divestment, and we will keep asking for divestment until justice for the people of Gaza and Palestine is served. Thank you.
Thank you, Naseem. Our next speaker is Yusuf Abu Shabna, followed by Stephen Gastier. Yusuf, good afternoon.
The university, when you ask anyone, what do universities mean, he tell you that's mean lecture, books, a place where you study in this place. But I shocked when I explore that in U.S., all of university here support Israeli airstrike, bomb. But in eighteen of October, my house is bombed by airstrike from Israeli. I am injured. I came here to take a medicine with me, me with my family, but unfortunately, I lose my sister. She's named Jude, she's fourteen years old. Now, I need to settle in my situation here and enroll in one of university. But unfortunately, when I explore that, all of university in U.S. support Israeli, how can I tell my friend in Gaza, I study in university in U.S. and the university in this one support Israeli to kill you and all your relations in Gaza? I know me and my dad and my mom to, my daddy take a master degree from this university. This university, I searched and I asked all of people I know and who can help, tell me that university that support Israeli. And being, when I know that, I'm really sure the university just is based for prayer and just not to political things. And this is my mom, she's lost her daughter. Without my dad, she's continuing to, not to be there in Gaza. Also, my little sister Jihan, she's nine years old. She left now to maybe to take a social, what I call it? Psychology things with one member of here in the community. She's ninety old. All the day ask me, where's my sister? Can we live with her? I tell him she's in paradise now. Just it.
I've seen the violence and the crimes that's happened to me. Overnight, my life was turned upside down and found myself here. I lost my daughter, she's fourteen, and my younger daughter, she was shot me on. Me, my daughter, my son, and my husband are here, and everything's different, and our life is completely different.
I want to just acknowledge the fact that we're at the College of Human Medicine here. And we've had a long journey, medical journey. We were first at Shifa Hospital, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but Shifa Hospital has been under constant bombarding, bombardment, barely any medical supplies or any medication. They have little, a little amount of doctors, no anesthesia. She's had to do a lot of treatment personally without anesthesia. Her daughter, who had lost a part of her arm bone, had also had to do a lot of treatment without anesthesia as well. They save the very little anesthesia that they have for very extreme cases, but from my perspective, even nine-year-old with her arm being, the bone being off is not an urgent case, that just tells you the extreme, how extreme things are. Then they had to transfer to another hospital because Shifa got bombed. And with that, they heard about this American association that helps people, and they fled to Rafah, the border, and yeah. we had to flee north to the Rafah border. We were told to take this thing called the safe passage, but this passage was nothing far from safe. When walking there, you're supposed to endure long distance of walking. My daughter, who just had surgery five days ago, was expected to walk for three hours. She was bleeding. As you're walking, you see and you experience the worst amounts of torture and violence, corpses everywhere, Israeli airstrikes going over you. And if you do not coordinate with the Israeli government, the fact that you are leaving, you could be arrested, you could be shot, arrested is probably the best-case scenario, arrested and tortured, that. And you could be arrested, you could be shot, you could be just basically like airstriked. It is the worst walk. It's nothing but safe, and if you don't, you can only walk with a white flag and then your ID, and a Palestinian ID is what segregates us away behind the wall where limits us from going through certain streets and stuff. Yeah.
What did we do to deserve this? And after arriving in Egypt, we got the medical treatment, then we were able to get a visa to the U.S. where we got medical treatment. But I often ask myself, how is it that the same country that's bombing us is the same one that's treating us? How does that, that doesn't feel right? What about, what about the kids never got to finish their school year? Why is that fair? How is it that you could strip somebody from their basic human rights and put them through so much violence to be, to come at them as a savior and say, here you go, here's the Band-Aid for the wound that we gave you? Don't worry though, it's like, so. She says she can't finish. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker will be Stephen Gastier, appearing via Zoom, and then Mike Balo. Stephen, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good, good afternoon. Please proceed with your comments.
Good afternoon. So, thank you for this opportunity to address the Board of Trustees. We've already heard from people about the scope of the horrors committed on the left of Palestinians by Israel's attacks since October eighth, and how our investments fund those horrors. Indeed, bombs built by our investments may well have Indeed, bombs built by our investments may well have killed Tadak Klavitt, among others, the 2022 country fellow who was here, who subsequently perished along with his entire family in November from the Israeli airstrike. What I really want to mention today, though, is the alternative. I was proud to co-author a report by the MSU Center for Community and Economic Development that mapped out the potential impact and pathways to investing in small businesses in the most marginalized and unmet communities in Michigan. Our investment in downtown Detroit has done real good for the city and brought positive press to MSU, and likewise has shown our investments in Flint. We could likewise reserve our funds in community development investment institutions such as Chi Ishavah, an entrepreneurial community development investment institution, also known as CDFI, that has provided capital for much-needed new business development serving our native community in Michigan. As outlined in our report, we could also be investing in other CDFI's that support small businesses, women's catering businesses, garages, new other adventure classes in Flint, Detroit, in northern Michigan rural communities. This, this funding could support the work of our excellent extension educators, who we heard from earlier this morning. We have an opportunity to invest in growing our communities. We could use the existing financial investment task force that came out of the University Council resolution in 2023 to look into how to make these investments happen while receiving an extremely stable return on investment. We have the opportunity to lead, divert our funding from those present in violence to build into a more beautiful state, society, and community. I urge the Board of Trustees to consider acting in this way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Our next speaker will be Mike Balo, followed by Ted Golden. Mike, good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. I'd like to begin by welcoming President Guskiewicz. It's my first meeting with you here. I wouldn't have come last time, but for the first time in four years, I was not at a board meeting. I was at a wedding in Virginia, so you'll forgive me. But I've been at this for about four years, kind of on my own listening tour. And I've gotten around the state, and I've talked to alums, and I've talked to donors. And I'm going to tell you one thing that I've learned, is that people truly love this school, whether they went here, or their kids went here, or their grandkids went here. All they want is to believe in it again. They want to stop seeing the school in the headlines in a negative light. Now, that doesn't mean that they don't want to see the schools, the school in the headlines if there's underlying instances. The problem is not that the school is in the headlines, it's that there are core issues that we fail to deal with, which are causing it to be in the headlines. And whether I'm in Flint, by the way, a shout-out to my friend Sheldon Neely, the mayor here. We worked together on an economic development project years ago. This is a great American city, and I commend you for bringing me to here to Flint. I like Flint a lot. I've been here several times on the campaign trail, or Saginaw, or Alpena, or Traverse City, or Holland, or Grand Rapids, or my hometown of Detroit. And the thing that I hear 99% of the time is, if you run for that board and are successful, try to bring professionalism back, try to bring honesty and integrity back. We can't have a board that puts personal ambition ahead of justice. We can't have a board or an administration that puts MSU brand integrity ahead of justice or honesty. You know, there are several shortcomings. I've gotten pretty good at filing FOIAs, and I wish I didn't have to. I wish I could just get the documents when I ask for them because they're legitimate, but I'll file the FOIAs. You know, I've discovered just crazy things recently, like within the last few months, MSU somehow, without the knowledge of the board or the president, has filed friend-of-the-court briefs in Ohio for a lawsuit that Ohio State is seeking to limit the rights of sexual abuse survivors. We can't have that here. It's not acceptable. I won't accept it. I can promise you nothing but my blood, sweat, and tears if I'm fortunate enough to get on the board. I will work with and support our new president, who I've heard good things about and is out in the communities more than the last five presidents combined over the last 20 years, and this is what we need. And it's hard. What we're seeing here today is hard. This is not comfortable, but this is okay because this is where this kind of discussion is supposed to happen. And so I'm glad that you took off of the agenda, this whole concept of limiting public comment time, because that would be a reversal. You can find out more about me. I'm getting around the state, working hard as I get toward the election. I hope to win a seat on this board. You can contact me at mike@mikebalofremssu.org or my website, which is mikebalofremssu.org. I can only close with this. This place is worth fighting for, and I think a lot of good people are fighting for it, and I want to support those people. God bless you for listening.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Ted Golden, followed by Drew Thurston. Ted, I think you are joining us on Zoom. Can you, can you hear me? Ted, can you hear me? Or is Ted there? Ted, you should be able to hear my voice now, apparently. Maybe not, okay. Our next speaker is Drew Thurston, followed by Lucius Vassar. Drew, are you with us? Okay. And then I guess our last speaker for this morning is Lucius Vassar. Lucius, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Dr. Vassar. We, we the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. I recognize that the preamble to the Constitution and those words were not intended to apply to my ancestors and millions of enslaved Africans or even women at the time they were written, and still, we fight to create a more perfect union. Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. Now, I am not a constitutional scholar, but I, like several of you, have studied and been tested on my knowledge of the Constitution. I pursued a career path that led me more deeply into federal, state, and local policy, but even as a child, I had an interest in the law, how they are made, how they are applied, why they might apply differently to different people. I was very troubled to read that this body is considering a policy change that directly implicates a constitutional right conferred by the very First Amendment to the Supreme Law of the Land in 1791. Although the First Amendment speaks to actions of Congress, it would certainly be awesome if this governmental body would take cues from the Bill of Rights. Unfortunately, deference to the foundational principles of law, such as due process and candor, are not always evident to me in your actions. So I wanted to take this opportunity to flag this one for you. As you have not considered the stifling of constitutional rights today during the summer in Flint, I won't speculate as to your motive, timing, and choice of venue for what you propose. I will offer, however, that suppressing the ability for anyone to address the public bodies is not the way to go. Changing your bylaws for your comfort and convenience is not a hallmark of public service, but service to yourselves. Changing the rules to limit discussion of tough issues will not make them go away. A powerful example of this occurred in 1836. At that time, abolitionists, primarily consisting of white men and women, sent more than 130,000 petitions to Congress asking for the abolition of the institution of slavery. Sadly, the Congress passed a resolution to table or postpone action on these petitions without hearing them. Changing the rules could not and will not silence the truth. Our country owes a great debt to those who persevered and pressed forward to end this evil, vile, and peculiar institution of shallow slavery. Since we are here in this great city of Flint, I will close my remarks with a quote from the late poet that was born and raised in this city, Eric Tyrone Breed, who admonished all of us to heed these powerful words, "Ain't no future in your front."
I'm just going to pause quickly and see Ted Golden might be having a few microphone issues, so I don't know if our IT friends can try and give it one last shot before we wrap up. Ted, can you, you hear me? Yeah, I think we're still having a few, a few technical issues, so. President Guskiewicz, I think that concludes public comment for this morning, for this afternoon.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank our friends and colleagues here in Flint for opening your doors to us. It's been an enlightening and productive few days with our board retreat and the meeting today. So with that, I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Meeting is adjourned.
I know, I see that I returned. Yeah, that would be good. I got a paper, oh, put my face on it, my car. But I'm parked on the side. I can hang in the nice window. It's unmarked. I don't even have a hair. I know, I was kind of thinking, I was like, oh, they've got the.